If I'd had to see, it's all right meetings. Let's see, we're all here but Mr. McLaurin, I guess he'll show up. This is a continuation of the first meeting of the month. Welcome to August 16th Board Meeting. The very first thing we have is the budget proposal at the hearing before we approve the agenda.
Thank you. I work the computer, I'm gonna have to join y'all. Well, welcome everyone to the first public hearing for the 2005-2006 budget process. Several weeks ago, the Board of Alderman appointed three members of the board to a budget committee, Jim Mills, Jeanette Self, and myself. And we've been working pretty diligently over the past several weeks to present a budget to the board as well as to the public. Tonight, we're gonna use kind of the philosophy of how do you eat an elephant? And the best way that I've learned how is one bite at a time. So tonight's bite will be the revenue bite. And a couple of weeks from now, in September, at the next scheduled board meeting, that bite will be the expenditure bite. And that perhaps may be even more interesting than the revenue side, but I certainly don't want to shortchange what we're going to discuss this evening. I will let you know that the budget is on the city website for you to be able to download, as well as that there is a copy for review at the city clerk's office, and that we happen to provide that to you. At the end of this public hearing, we'll have an opportunity for any comments or questions concerning the budget. That public comment period will be limited to the public hearing on the budget. There will be a later timeframe for general comments and concerns as part of the regular Board of Alderman meeting. Well, a couple of fun budget facts. The first one is the actual fiscal year is not a normal calendar year, but is in fact from October 1st to September 30th. And that's why you always hear this, it's the fiscal year budget 2005 to 2006. For my purposes through the rest of this presentation, I'm just gonna call it the 2006 budget if you'll allow me. There's also multiple funds within a budget. You have the general fund, which most people think of as our budget, which is a $12.4 million budget. But you also have enterprise funds. Those are things like the Starkville Electric and the Water and Sewer Groups. And then you even have a few restricted funds where money is designated only for certain purposes, but there are very few of those and we won't really touch on those tonight. Any municipal budget here in Mississippi must be a balanced budget. We will be, of course, presenting that tonight. That isn't always easy, but nonetheless, that is the requirement. And it's also required to be presented and approved no later than September 15th. Well, I mentioned that we had a $12.4 million budget here in 2006, and I thought it appropriate to kind of look back and see how that might have changed over the past few years. And one of the things that I hope you'll notice is that we've had significant revenue growth over the past six years. And that's a reflection of the significant growth that Starkville has seen. It's not an increase in taxes as you might have expected. This is simply a reflection of the dynamic growth here in Starkville, both from a sales tax standpoint, from an ad valorem tax, and others. I will make two comments on this slide. The 2005E is an estimate. We, of course, have not finished the 2005 calendar year, so that is our best estimate at this point of where it will end up. And 2006B is this proposed budget that we're discussing. The one complex bar there is in 2004, and it was not a significant jump in revenues that occurred that year, but it was in fact a loan that was required for us to meet our obligations specifically around roads. And that's why there was that pretty big jump. But every year, you can see that the city's increasing its revenues in a multi-percent fashion because of that growth. Now, this is gonna be a little bit hard to see, and I've passed around some copies of this. That $12.4 million in our general fund, well, where does that come from? And I imagine some of you might have thought, well, that's property taxes. In fact, that is not the largest component. The largest component by far are sales taxes. And again, that's a reflection of our economic and retail growth here in Starkville. And that's why you hear so many of us talk about how important retail growth is for Starkville, because it funds things like additional services and infrastructure. Property tax is next at roughly 21 percent of our revenues. It's clearly very important, but not the biggest component. I'll talk about those components here in the next slide, and so that you didn't have to do quick math on what 35 percent of $12.4 million was. I went ahead and included the actual figures for the budget of revenue and a few of the other categories that are important. The next in line is tax-equivalent revenues. Those are things from TVA and from the Cable TV Group, who in essence provide us with this tax-equivalent payment instead of paying direct taxes to the city. It surprised me that the city collects over a million dollars in fines. And that's certainly nothing that you're counting on or that you expect will grow, but it is a significant portion by any measure of our budget. And then we go around that wheel to the smallest component, which is interest on our tax revenues. And that's something that has gotten a lot of attention and will continue to get even more attention as we try to manage our money better as we go forward. I mentioned that growth in sales tax revenue, and for the last 10 years, we've seen over a million dollars, actually a million and a half dollars of growth in sales tax here in Starkville. Now, this is not the total sales tax that is collected. As you know, we pay 7 percent on our purchases here in Mississippi. The city itself only receives 18 and a half percent of that 7 percent collected. But still, this is what a great picture of how Starkville is emerging as a retail hub and how important sales tax growth is for Starkville. City property tax, also representing significant growth. And before anyone jumps to a logical conclusion that this must have been from a tax increase, no, in fact, it's not. It's an increase from new development and remodeled, new buildings, et cetera, that really drives city property tax. There was an assessment change that would have gone into effect in 2003. That's driven by the county. They would have gone and reviewed your property. Perhaps originally it was thought to be $100,000, and due to growth or perhaps improvement, they would have made an assessment change. But property taxes have not changed, yet within this relatively short time period, we've been able to generate a million dollars additional revenue here. Now, since we're talking about property tax, where does all this go? When you pay your property taxes, and last year for the first time, we paid them at the county, you may have thought that all of that money went to the city of Starkville. Well, in fact, only 15 percent of your total property tax bill, whether more than likely on properties or cars, those type of things, actually only went to the city. The Starkville Schools accounts for 54 percent of our property tax, and the county gets the remaining 31 percent. These millage rates for the city have not changed. Now, the good news is that the 2006 budget, the Starkville Schools will be looking at roughly a one-point-something mill reduction. So hopefully, if the county follows suit, there should be a slightly lower property tax bill for us. I wanted to show a little bit about what you're actually paying when you go and pay your property tax at the county each year. Because of homestead exemptions, if you have a home that's assessed at $100,000 value, you're actually only paying $12 to the city of Starkville, a pretty good deal. And homestead also affects the amount of money that you pay to Octavio County, but it doesn't give you a break on the overall city school tax. So in this example, you'd have paid a total of $800 in property tax. If you compare that to a commercial property, let's say a rental home here in Starkville, there's not a homestead exemption, and the actual calculation that's used to compute your taxes is 50 percent higher. They use a 15 percent assessed value as opposed to a 10 percent assessed value. So that same property provides a total of $1,600 in total property tax. Not interesting necessarily from a policy standpoint, just from an overall revenue The 2 percent restaurant tax, which was passed a little over 10 years ago, has also seen some great growth. In that first year, we're looking at a little bit over $500,000 in that 2 percent tax, and we're expected to be well over a million dollars this year. Again, it reflects that strong growth here in Starkville, strong tourism, really recognizes what a healthy community that we have. But where does this 2 percent money go? It doesn't just go to the city. Actually, 40 percent of that goes to the Parks and Rec Group. But I'll note that that actually is just for a bond that paid for the Sportsplex, really a top-notch facility that we enjoy here as residents and also draws in visitors from around the state and truly around the country. That pays for that bond. And then it's broken up in 20 percent ratios between the Visitors and Conventions Bureau, our Economic Development Agency called OCITA, as well as the city of Starkville, which was also designated specifically for economic development around real property. And this is what that million dollars will go to in 2005. Most $400,000 will go to pay down that bond that built the Sportsplex at the Parks and In 2006, though, that breakout changes. We still give 40 percent of that allocation to paying down the Sportsplex debt. And in fact, this money will now increasingly start going to the indoor Sportsplex, a really fantastic facility that we're just recently asked for some architectural drawings and bidding to move forward. For the first time, though, the university will be receiving a portion of that 2 percent restaurant tax, and that is dedicated primarily for transit. We all know about the night route. It hopefully will be expanded, and that portion of that 2 percent tax will go to fund that. But to create that money for the university, we had to reduce in other areas. And the Visitors and Conventions Bureau went from 20 to 15 percent. OCITA went from 20 to 15, and the city of Starkville's portion went all the way to 10 percent. And so this is the expectation of how the funds will be distributed in the fiscal year 2006. And hopefully, we'll continue to see significant growth in that fund. The last thing I'd like to comment on as it relates to budget funds is this enterprise fund. We mentioned those briefly to begin with. These are funds that collect fees to support their activities, and they don't come from the general fund, the Starkville Electric, the Water and Sewer Group, sanitation and landfill, et cetera. That's why when you think of it, how can you run a city with all of its components on just 12 million? Well, this is one of the reasons why, because of course, the biggest components of some of the things that you think of as Starkville, they're covered out of a separate enterprise fund group, and in fact, the fees that are collected by those groups cover their operation. So if, just as a reminder, before I move to the last slide, which is a calendar slide, this is where that $12.4 million worth of revenue comes from. Again, sales tax is one of the key levers that we have to increase our revenues. And so if we talk about a calendar, I mentioned before that the deadline is upon us in a sense of September the 15th. And between now and then, we have several actions. The Budget Committee will continue to review this process. We don't expect that there would be any revenue changes, but if any of the forecasts that we've utilized change, that might be something that would be reviewed and then recommunicated. We'll also be looking at expenditures and the overall budget to make sure that we've got this thing fine-tuned as best as we can. And then on September 6th, there'll be an additional public hearing for us to discuss the expenditure portion of where does that $12.4 million go? How are we investing the tax money? And then on the 12th is tentatively when we're planning on having a meeting to discuss adoption of this budget. And as I mentioned before, there is a draft copy of this budget on the web, and there will continue to be copies if there are any revisions made, either on the website or also in the city clerk's office. And with that, I'd like to open it up for any public comments specific to the budget process or to the revenue presentation that we talked about. Again, we'll have time for the general meeting comments at a later point in the meeting tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Chairman a question. Mr. Chairman, as of the last work session, there are some major, big ticket items that this board's gonna have to address, and I know we'll have a second public hearing at our next meeting. Let me just stop right here and say thank you for the great job the committee have done in formulating this budget. But we're gonna need to make some very key decisions as to growth, capital improvements, and the issue of salaries. Are those matters affirmative of this budget as we sit down?
The draft budget that we've put together has several things from an expenditure side that we tried to reflect from a budget committee standpoint from that most recent work session. We heard loud and clear that infrastructure was very important, and we needed to try to find a way to provide some additional revenues for that. The budget that is on the website reflects $200,000 for capital projects and infrastructure. We are hoping that either through additional revenue projections or other ways that we can fine-tune that budget, that we'll be able to provide additional monies for critical infrastructure needs. Specific to salaries, at this time, we've not allocated money for salary increases. That is something that we also heard from that budget work session, that it is important, if at all possible, and we're working diligently to identify opportunities for us to do that.
In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, at the next meeting, would be correct to say the union committee will have a recommendation as to how this should be prepared?
Yes, sir, it is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you very much. Frank Standford. Yes, I didn't see your hand. You had to speak up down there, Mr. Davis.
May I, and I know we're talking about revenues, and I see on your calendar, when it was up there, that y'all were gonna go back in and review certain things about the budget. Would it be appropriate at this time to talk about a particular expenditure invoiced by hopes that y'all would attend to that? Or would you like me to save those for after you reviewed and we talk about expenditures at that time?
Well, I think if we haven't heard it already and/or you want to emphasize it so that we really do hear it, I think this is a perfect time to that.
Okay.
So that as we continue in our process, that we're able to take into account that.
All right. Then I would like to ask the committee to strongly look at the mini-bus transportation money that's in the budget. FY '05 was an allocation of $28,125, and the proposal for FY '06 drops that to $22,500. And I know that they have requested an increase, and I understand that we're gonna evaluate all of these increases to 32 and a half. But I would really like to emphasize that y'all try to find, number one, the $28,125 and not cut that allocation, but also to find the extra 5,000 rough numbers to put into that allocation, because with that, they're gonna be able to acquire a second bus, be able to transport more seniors, more handicapped people to the doctor, to the grocery store, to the pharmacy, so that they can carry out their daily function. And I would really like to emphasize for y'all to try to do that and find that money and put it back in there for that purpose. If you have specific questions about that program, Mr. Bobby Gann is here in the audience. I'm sure he would be more than willing to either discuss issues this evening or come at y'all's convenience to the committee to discuss these issues with you. But I would just like to make that point, please ask y'all to look for those funds.
Well, I'll say, all of what we consider the outside contributions were capped at the 2005 level for this proposed budget. I clearly made a clerical error if that reflects a reduction, because that is not the intention of our proposed draft budget to have represented any cuts in any of our outside contributions at this time. And so, one, just be assured that's a clerical error, and I have to admit that I'm the clerk in this example. And then the additional appropriation will be something that the Budget Committee needs to look at, and there are definitely some, I think it's the thought of the Budget Committee that our outside contributions need to focus on economic development or need to focus on services that the city can't easily provide itself. And so you immediately think of like the Red Cross, where it provides these great shelter services, and even perhaps this elderly bus system. Those are the type of things that we've mentioned in our committee that we want to make sure we focus on, but I do want to apologize for the clerical error, because we've represented from the very beginning that we were gonna include in the total outside contributions the same as what was allocated last year, and that should have followed through on each of the individual line items, and so that was an oversight.
Right, okay. So I appreciate that. Thank you, and I would just ask you to give strong consideration to their requests this year because of the potential for increased services and any service that they all provide.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gann a question. Gann, do you have records showing the participation in their program? How many people ride the buses by day or by week and so forth?
Yes, we do.
You do have?
Yes. Since October 1st, just beginning of August, we have 107 individuals. We have anywhere from 12, 22, 30 people ride every day, we ride about 7 hours, we have about 7 hours drives. Right now, about 85 to 90 percent of our buses ride on the road, 70% on the road. We are a master of some posts to the grocery store, to Wal-Mart, and I get most of them on the office performance, apparently, K and I, I was just basically on that.
Do you feel like the buses we've got, justification could match the people if you were caring, or could we care the people with a less size of bus, maybe a smaller bus?
No.
Could not.
We schedule them out about three to four days in advance. We've got, we schedule all this week, have our bus. We apply to the Department of Transportation for additional buses, and they just get delivered to Jackson on August 1st, and we just leave that additional bus to, we got people that we have to put off a week at a time now, three, four days to leave at a time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I'm dumping comments, I'm trying to make it short. Mr. Mayor, more by like token in terms of asking committee consideration of particular aspects of the budgets, I would urge the committee to take a careful look at the request of the Octavio County Humane Society in terms of their contractual service they provide for the city. One of the things often forgotten in the process is the fact that, and sometimes considered an outside agency request, forgotten in that process is the fact that the city went to the Humane Society some score of years ago, asking them to take over from the city what was then a failed city operation in terms of providing appropriate animal control for this community. The Humane Society did so. They have, as you know, through significant private fundraising efforts with some city assistance, contributed a major new facility for animal control to our community and have deeded that to the city. So the animal control is almost like a city department, the Humane Society, like a city department performing a city function at the city's request some years ago. So we need to take a careful look at this particular facility and operation.
And I think they've asked for a $20,000 increase in the last year or so.
They have asked for some increase, and of course, previously had been promised, if you will, as far as such promises can go, that there would be additional manpower to help operate and view an expanded facility.
Extended money still for a little. Do we have any other comments? Just praying we stand for the approval of the official agenda. There are here a motion that we have approval of the official agenda. Longhead opted to look at it.
Just a process question. If I were gonna ask to pull something out of the consent agenda, would I do that now or do I do that as part of the approval of the consent agenda?
You could probably pull it out now, and then we'd lead it at the consent agenda.
Okay. I'd like to ask that we remove from the consent agenda under Mayor's Office, three, item F, that is the recommended approval of the cell phone system. I think that's pretty exciting and deserves some discussion.
Okay, we'll put that item F in the official agenda. Mr. Mayor, one comment also along those lines. Alden Cox indicated that that particular item was, by some standards, an exciting item, and that, of course, it is. I would also point out that there are a number of items over the consent agenda that are exciting items and perhaps bear some, a little bit more publicity than they get with just a routine approval of those items. So we might wanna talk about ways to improve the understanding of those items, but at the same time, enable the items to be approved in a prominent, expeditious fashion.
I thought I'd agree. That certainly is a start. Do we have an approval of the official agenda with that item taken off of the telephones out of the Mayor's Office?
Sir Mayor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to move with a second. All those in favor of the approval?
Discussion. Mr. Mayor, important discussion. I see on tonight's agenda, page two or five, item Roman numeral H, recommended session. Item that references capital B and says, "Discussion of Role of the Chief Administrator Officer in the Organization and Operation of the City." I want to ask the chair, what qualifies this matter for a dedicated session? We are only going to discuss the role and we're not to discuss job performance or competency or some evaluation on this position. What qualifies this matter for a dedicated session?
I was the one that asked for the item to be added to the agenda altering of her things. It is stated in that particular fashion. This will be a personnel amount, and I will make the appropriate motion at the time to request consideration for an executive session.
Yes, sir. And we just discussed it in close session. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. We have a motion with a second on approval of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
It does pass. It brings us down to the consent agenda, in which we did have one item removed from the consent agenda. And I will go through these very quickly. The first thing we have is board business is old, which you notice it, the city attorney captain Kirby at the time was to execute and present an order on behalf of the city. This is basically a lawsuit that has been dropped. Brings us down to departmental business. The sanitation department, they advertise for seal bids for the polyurethane bags. The press authorized to advertise this for two garbage trucks and one double king cab pickup. Reclassification of Mr. Bobby Miller from temporary full-time to regular full-time status. A request authorizing to grant annual leave of ninety days to Mr. Larry Brownlee. Request authorization to hire a temporary full-time driver in accordance of Mr. Brownlee. Public services, request approval to purchase steel casting for sewer problem projects. Request approval of a salary adjustment for employee at the water waste treatment plant. Community development, recommend approval for a request by the Great American Homes in Mississippi LLC for a site plan review for senior daycare located on Garrett Road. Is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Recommend, recommendation approval of a request by Mr. Lauren Dale for a site review at Parsons Place Number One, located southwest corner of Jackson Street and Hospital Road. Is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Recommend approval by a request of, by place properties for a site review contingent on the variance being given as to height restrictions and the number of parking places given, the nature of the project located at the corner of Muldro, the Old Creamy Properties and Russell Street, recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And recommend approval of change order number two for pressure filter number seven. Police department, request authorization to allow block starville police department to text the commission to attend a crime scene. Interviewing, interrogation seminar in Little Rock on September twelfth, fourteen. The electric department requests an authorization to advertise for bids for meter reader, reading electric and water meters. The Mayor's Office recommendation report from municipal court staff, personnel director, John Long, John Young, computer system manager, Al Quinn, and janitor Bobby Cromwell. Request approval for the seal bid purchase of a supervisory, supervisory control data acquisition system, master station in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars with an additional thirty-seven fifty for an automated alarm dialer, whatever that is. A resolution authorizing the Golden Triangle Planning and Development District to prepare and submit community development block grant application, Appalachian regional commission application for the city of Starville. Recommend approval additions to the July two thousand and five claims docket. Request approval for final pay application for Sam Oswalt and Sons Construction Company construction to George M. Bryan Field. Airport parking lot is recommended by the airport commission. Recommend approval of hiring to municipal service, Chad Cheetum, at the price of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents as an engineering assistant. That covers those items plus additional two items that were added late in the public service to request approval to advertise to fill a vacant service rider position in the vehicle maintenance division of the public service department due to an August twelfth, two thousand and five resignation. And at the Mayor's Office, request approval for paid claim project Brick Fire in the amount of thirty-one thousand eight twenty-three twenty-nine. This is grant letting submitted by the state. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda items?
Senator?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. Discussion here. There was nothing in the packet on a couple of these items, so let me ask a question. This board, on the reclassification of Bobby Miller from temporary full-time to regular full-time, would you give us a little explanation of that? What is it? Why are we doing it? Why do we want to do it and so forth?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor, Board of Alderman, CA, Mississippi. Bobby Miller came on as temporary driver because he retired foreman, that's foreman, Charles Day. He, she retired. And my father said, "I give another young man some of the responsibilities." Which then I had got Bobby Miller as a temporary full-time driver. Young man, Mr. Brownlee, is leaving on December twenty-second, retired. He's taking on his annual leave vacation at a time that he has. Therefore, Bobby Miller, this will be, I'm asking that Bobby Miller requests that Bobby Miller become a full-time driver for two weeks, and he will want to be full-time position open until that happens. And we're kind of...
Okay, and that then also covers my second question. Mr. Brownlee's ninety days leave is preliminary to retirement.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have a motion with a second. Does that answer your question? Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda. All those, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. That approves us, brings us down to the approval of the minutes, minutes from August the second, two thousand and five.
I know that it's been somewhat the practice of even this board to approve minutes subject to future correction. But I would recommend that this time, since we're starting doing the process, as well as the fact that not everyone's had an opportunity to provide corrections, that we postpone or table this item until our next meeting, at which time we can have a final group of amendments that reflect all of our changes and corrections. This, of course, is probably one of the most important things you do in a sentence because it is what goes in the record. And I wouldn't be comfortable at this time approving the minutes based on where we are today.
Our board would approve the third day of the week.
I would second that motion to take under advisement of the post-minute's August of two thousand and five regulation.
Well, now, you know, we do have some problems in that we had three meetings ago in which we were waiting on approvals from those meetings that took three meetings ago. And to say to delay approval and fixing of these documents for approval allows the people to say, interpret things that they may see fit to do that. I'm not accusing anybody specifically of, say, tampering with the meetings if we don't get a timely fashion of approval of these things. And that I think we need to say, work in that direction to get a timely approval of meetings. And don't let these things drag us out.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say one thing which is substantive. I just want to mention to the board a real deal with who did minutes at later times. I just want to say respectfully, my learned colleague from Ward Three mentioned at the last meeting in the form of a motion that he wanted to reconstitute the committee that was real portion and annexational. And I just want to clarify that, that during the last term, is my clear recollection that the board did not have an annexation committee. Went back to research the minutes and the minute states dated November six, two oh one, that the board only had a real portionment committee. So hopefully, we'll get to the minutes and we'll make sure that is corrected. That was a substantive matter, and I just wanted to bring that out to the board and appreciate that for some heaven's sake, colleagues from Ward Three. But I just want to make sure the record is straight on that. I knew that the last time we had annexation was in nineteen ninety-eight, the latter part of October, November, that's going on with the size of the city. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Okay. Now, we have a motion that we... Excuse me, yes.
When you say you want this done in a timely manner, I don't have any problem with it being in a timely manner. But with the corrections that I have to the minutes, I will come into the office and will go over them with time.
That's not a problem.
Because I do have numerous corrections.
Did you state that in form of motion to hold this until...
Take it on.
Okay, you second that, I believe. All right, we have a motion to hold the current improvement of the minutes until, and take it under advisement to the next meeting. All of you heard the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Looks like that's an announcement. That brings us down to public appearances. Patrick, where are you? I know that you're around here somewhere. Is here from Starville and mostly discuss the bike lane proposal for University Drive. And I think we see this saying, all plastered up here. Are you going to give us a...
I'm going to give you a presentation here on the telephone.
Excellent.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman, I'm here to propose a bike lane project for University Drive that would extend the bike lanes from the MSU campus to the downtown and then on North Montgomery Street. What we're trying to do is provide a safe, provide safe access to the restaurants, businesses, and homes along the way for citizens of Starville on University Drive. And what we're looking at is, we have current situat... The current environment on University Drive is unsafe. And what we mean by that, what I mean by that is, traffic moves too quickly on that street. Cyclists ride on the sidewalks, which is dangerous for pedestrians. There's blind entry and exit ways along University Drive, which can pose a hazard for cyclists as well as motorists. And we also see an underutilization of alternative modes of transportation. This is kind of an illustration of the current environment. We already have numerous cyclists on University Drive. And the little green symbol there symbolizes a bicycle and the amount of space they currently have with no lanes drawn out. It's not always the safest situation for cyclists. And with traffic moving as quickly as it does, it is definitely a hazard for cyclists. And this is the proposal from city engineer Bill Webb. And this is kind of a section of what you'll see here on this map that we have on the wall. What he has done is put the parking in strategic places to where if you own a business or you are a stakeholder on University Drive, you have parking on the public street in front of your business. But you never have the situation where you have parking directly across from... You never have parking where there's spaces directly across from one another, which allows you to have a much wider street, which allows for wide bike lanes and enough room for motorists as well. And what we're looking at with this proposed plan is improved safety. We'd like to see slower traffic on University Drive. We'd like to see dedicated bike lanes on University Drive on both sides of the street. This would be safer for pedestrians because we are getting the cyclists off the sidewalks. We've increased the visibility on University with the blind entry and exit ways. And finally, we would post signs for, to make motorists aware of cyclists on the road with them. And I'd like to see a reduction in the speed limit to twenty. It's currently thirty miles per hour on University Drive. But you're seeing, sometimes you'll see motorists going fifty miles per hour, which definitely is not safe. So, like to decrease the speed limit, post signs, and by doing so, make it safer on University Drive. The additional benefits that you'd see is that with this plan that the city engineer has drawn up, since you have a wider street, it easily accommodates emergency vehicles. This also complements the MSU master plan for a walkable, bikeable campus. It promotes healthy lifestyles here in our community and provides greater access to restaurants and businesses on University Drive. And what we've done in the last couple of weeks is discuss this plan with the stakeholders along University Drive. Most were very favorable of this plan. There was, however, a concern from the Catholic Church about a reduction in the parking on the public street. Other than that, we got very favorable reactions from the stakeholders along University Drive.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Mayor, I've also included this in a later part of the agenda. If it's hard with the board, I'll save some of my questions and comments for that time.
That'll be fine. Thank you, Patrick. We have a report from the Oddfellow Cemetery Administrator, Miss Eve McArthur. She's here tonight.
I'm not very little, but you should all get my... You should have in your packet a single sheet entitled, "Geop physical survey." And that's an item that I'd like to address. You, the archaeology department at the university has the...
Excuse me, I don't remember seeing it in the packet. Perhaps, did you have some copies run right now?
Well, I brought the copies in, in a timely fashion. I think I can explain it to you. You will not need it.
That's fine.
And if you need it, then we can certainly arrange for that. I'm sorry, I thought that in your packet.
That's all right. We were just going to go run some real quick.
Okay, well, if you... The archaeology department at the university has an instrument called a gradometer, which we have used in the cemetery.
Police captain.
There you go. We have used that instrument in the cemetery in the past, and its function is to detect any movement below ground. In other words, if a hole has been dug here, we can detect that that has happened. The earth has been disturbed. And I would like to ask the board to enter into what of the kind of arrangement is required for the city to pay the, for the use of the gradometer in our... We have a partners field in Oddfellow's on the university that we know is there. But we have no clue where people are buried or anything. And there are lots surrounding this area that might be saleable if we knew where people were buried. I won't even approach it until I have something more definite of that. And that's one of my, the use of the gradometer there. Plus, there are a number of lots in the cemetery that have had no activity in the last seventy-five years. There's not been a burial in that length of time. We know of no heirs or anything. And I'd like to determine if those spaces are truly, if there are unmarked burials in those lots. And if there are not, if that property might revert to the city for resale to someone who would be interested. We have done that once in a couple of instances. And that's my interest in the gradometer. I would like to have that. I'd like to have you discuss that possibility. Because I... because I, the city, the cemetery association has in the pay, has paid, thank you very much, for the use of the gradometer in some instances where we had a question, but the cemetery association will not continue to do that when it's in the general interest of the cemetery that we have this information.
And what was the cost again?
It's generally fifty dollars an hour if it has not changed. We can survey two to three, uh, lots, twenty-five by twenty-fives, uh, up to twenty-five by fifty, more or less in an hour's time. It would not be an extremely expensive thing. It depends upon, uh, they have used us as guinea pigs in the past to teach, uh, students in the archaeology department use of the equipment. I have no problem with that, but we certainly will not pay for that function. If they wanted, uh, teach somebody, then they can do it gratis for us.
Is there any money in the budget for this?
No. No, there's not.
We, we certainly haven't allocated these funds for two thousand and six, so, um, and I'd have to look back and see what funds are, may or may not be available in, uh, for this type of, uh, an activity in the cemetery. Uh, and it's just 'cause I, I didn't know if the request is, is what we have considered yet.
Of course.
Is this something that would not take probably more than eight hours to, to do your entire survey, approximately?
I would guess it would be more like twelve, fifteen, and that was, uh, still...
About five, six hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a giant sum anyway, but this, this, uh, it needs to be done, but I need authorization from the city to do that, and I need them to pay the fee for it. One other item that I'd like to bring to your attention, as you, if you're familiar at all with Oddfellow's on the university, we are landlocked, we have nowhere to go. There is one, uh, property that is not presently occupied, and it might, has not been for some two, two, three years, and I'm not sure. I have made no inquiries as to whether it's available. If you are interested in securing that land to extend the cemetery, then I'll make whatever, uh, need, I'll do whatever needs to be done, but I'm not spending time if you're not interested in doing it. It's, uh, it fronts Johnnyden Street, it's between the cemetery and Church of Living God, that look, there's a, a house on that lot there, and I, I don't know whether we can secure it or not, but it would certainly be a nice addition to the cemetery. We have nowhere to go tonight.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, uh, Ms. MacArthur, some, uh, years ago, took over general administration of Oddfellow Cemetery. Prior to that time, Mr. Larry Bell, building codes official, uh, had, had that responsibility, spending, uh, whatever time he had available on cemetery matters. Uh, Ms. MacArthur took a, a very, uh, tough assignment and has, has worked diligently on this. Uh, the cemetery is important to the community. If there exists the possibility of additional grave sites in that cemetery, they need to be explored, uh, four, five, six hundred dollars does not amount to anything in, in terms of the scheme of things. I would move, uh, a two-part motion that, uh, Ms. MacArthur be authorized to explore with the Cobb Institute of Archaeology an arrangement whereby the, what did you call it?
Gradometer.
Gradometer, uh, might be used in cemetery property to better provide, to better update our maps of, of the cemetery and its use. And second, that, uh, Ms. MacArthur be authorized to explore the availability of any property for expansion of the cemetery.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. All those opposed, raise your hand. Um, six to one, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Brings us down to Ergon Properties. Jim, are you in here somewhere?
I'm here.
Okay. Are you gonna present? There you are.
Just a little dog and pony, then I'll say it.
All of you have a packet of Ergon Properties and their request for this evening. They have their packet in your letter, that, uh, they have several pieces of properties that, uh, they have that, uh, I guess Mac and I are the only ones that would be familiar with the accumulation of these things and how it came about, but we'll let you present if you would. Basically, related to, uh, the, uh, I, I doubt that my soul in you. Okay.
Mayor of the Board, thanks for that, didn't come before you. I'm Jim Depoe at Ergon Properties. Uh, we're really excited about what we're doing in Starville. Uh, about a couple of months ago, we came before, planning the zone, and we went for site name approval. Uh, over the last couple of months, and we've gained both of the approvals, uh, from the Bead City and Board of Alderman. We're here before you today to clear a couple of old title issues that are, uh, of record, old grandees and old lotsways, um, and wanna ask you to, uh, you know, afford your approval and help us clear a couple of old title issues. Um, I wanted to tell you all that as of today, uh, in about two and a half weeks of marketing, we get taken about sixty-eight reservation deposits, over the six kind of million units. We're extremely, uh, excited about what we've got going on in Starville and look forward to, uh, really working on the remaining part of the university process, and hopefully we'll be in front of the guys asking for approvals and growing Starville, uh, along with you. And I just wanted to tell you that. Just time I'll turn it over to Dave.
Good evening, Board. And Mr. Mayor.
How are you today?
Mr. Nice to meet you.
Yes, sir. Attorney. Good to see you.
This line is going to hand out what we had prepared, that Mr. Faber's request to try somewhat more designate what we're discussing, requesting the board. I was actually able to procure from the Chamber of Commerce office some copies to hopefully help us plan what we're in the process of trying to do. This is the, uh, the proposed six point oh three acres, six point oh seven nine acres, that Ergon is currently on contract, first of Mississippi State, agreed in the process of trying to close. Uh, approximately around the first part of September, when we can begin construction. I'm gonna clean it up a little bit, where not so much everything else on top of it, and we can see a little bit better of what we're talking about there. There are some old easements. There's a ten-foot wide, and they're all ten-foot wide easements, but utilities that are not currently being utilized for any purpose whatsoever. One is running in this area, one is in this area, and the other one goes down along what is considered Mulgrove Street. We would like to have the city vacate those ten-foot wide utility easements, and on top of that, we'd also like the city to vacate Mulgrove Street. I've had the opportunity to discuss with Mr. Bill Webb, uh, and also Mr. Ed Haddaway. Mr. Haddaway, it's, uh, they have no problem, I'm never Mr. Haddaway, Mr. Haddaways, that they have no problem whatsoever vacating those utility easements, and we will be giving back easements to be able to have utilities supplied to the development. So it's just taking them out at this time where we can clean all of this up and be able to go in there and get the building built and utilities on another easement. And as far as the road, it's the same thing, to remove the road to where we can go back, be able to build, and then, of course, up under the pud and up under all of the development phases as we get through them, uh, I'm sure we'll be coming back to the board, uh, or accepting some of those roads. And of course, as I said before, we'll have to have those easements to be able to be able to prepare and get electricity. Yes, and please understand, the only portion of Mulgrove Street that we're asking the board to vacate is that portion that is currently located on Mississippi State University fiscal plan property. It has nothing to do with Mulgrove Street, across from that area, and what's being handed out now pretty much sets forth that we are under contract with Mississippi State University, and that we are in the portion of making this phase one purchase, where we can start phase one of this development. Uh, I was listening to the board earlier, speaking about, uh, the budget and everything, which in my research, this piece of property, to my knowledge, has not received any tax revenues since well before nineteen ninety-seven. So it seems like a hundred and six, kind of, might kinda increase a whole lot of tax revenue there. Uh, one of the other things I want to bring out, and explain to y'all why we're asking for this cleanup. This property has been developed or either changed around a multiplicity of times. I'm gonna try to just hold it real quick, so... Hopefully everybody can see. Let's go back to y'all, just a little bit, just right here. Back in nineteen fifty-four, Starville Land Company had ownership in this property. On their plat, they had a twenty-foot wide depicted road called Mulgrove Street, which runs from the entrance off of what at that time was Gillespie, which was now Russell Street. That twenty-foot wide easement goes the distance of Mississippi State property at that portion and stops at the fence. It feeds no other roads, no other access to anyone, and the adjoining property owners on both sides of that portion of Mulgrove Street is Mississippi State University. Uh, because of that, this became under the control of the city of Starville. In nineteen seventy-one, urban renewal came along. Urban renewal came in, and they did, and this is essentially about the six point oh three acres, six point oh seven acres, that Ergon is in the process of puring, except for this portion right here. This portion will be purer in the next phase, but as of this time, this portion is not being purer. The specific easements are going to be this one, this one, and this one that they'll be utility easements, that we would like vacated, as well as Mulgrove Street that runs in that area. In nineteen seventy-seven, a replat of urban, uh, urban renewal development, nineteen seventy-seven, which did not fit any easements whatsoever, it did not depict any road whatsoever, nor was it cleaned up in any manner. So because the nineteen seventy-one plat was never vacated, we have two platted urban renewals on this area. We have a nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-seven plat, and we have a nineteen seventy-one plat. Both of those plats are controlled as far as what goes on out there. So instead of going through the process of asking for the plats to be vacated in any manner, what we're asking for is that those easements be vacated and abandoned, and that Mulgrove Street be vacated and abandoned. And please, with the knowledge that there will be a street coming back in there. Uh, we have no choice but to have some way to get back in, and that, you know, at that time, we will be back before the board here. It's not that we're just trying to get something for nothing, we're just trying to clean it up where we can actually do the construction, and then go back and reform and put another street back in as well.
I think all of us were building and hoping to be overrun with existing Mulgrove right now, so, uh, without vacating Mulgrove, um, Ergon will not be able to go forward, but they're currently trying to get it cleared.
Well, a new street, uh, extend more in line with the current Mulgrove?
It's gonna be new streets.
New streets, I understand that, but you're planning on bringing it, and you cross it, will it be in line with the, uh, existing Mulgrove, or will it be offset like the, uh, prior to nineteen fifty-four or whatever it shows?
At this time, Mayor, without having a copy of that pud in front of me, I, I cannot verify that. Uh, what is unusual is that when you go to the nineteen fifty-four plat, the way it was offset is Mulgrove was approximately a forty to fifty-foot wide road that's across the street that the public uses, and what has always been used by Mississippi State is that little twenty-foot wide strip that is offset. Mr. Webb and I, uh, city engineer, got together and we looked at several things, and he was in the process of researching, and to my knowledge, uh, other than me coming up with the nineteen fifty-four plat, had no knowledge that Mulgrove Street existed on the Mississippi State property. Um, Mississippi State, uh, to my knowledge, the city has never done any work on Mulgrove Street, on that piece of property, done any upkeep on that as well. And, you know, due to the, uh, amount of investment in what Ergon is trying to do, which is going to be an excellent, excellent benefit for the city of Starville, especially from a tax perspective, now, we would hope that the city would work with us on trying to clean this up to where we can turn around and go back in and put it in more of a modern day, uh, development when it comes to providing utilities to it. It is being discussed now that there's a possibility that it will be underground utilities, which will also cut down on some of the necessary width from what Mr. Ed Haddaway discussed with me, as far as putting utilities on it. Uh, as far as the streets and everything else, I mean, you know, just at this time, we just need it, if we can possibly get it out of the way, to where we can turn around and do the development and then move forward with that.
That still doesn't answer my question, and I understand what you're asking.
Mayor, I think I answered your question. Our new proposed street is very much in line and on top of...
With the existing, current, McKernan Mulgrove?
Yes, and it's gonna have some parallel parking, which is gonna give the appearance of having a wider street.
Right.
Perhaps not parallel, uh...
But it comes straight across it, in, in the vicinity?
It, yes, sir. It's substantially in the same area that the street exists today. I don't know that it perfectly aligns with it, 'cause I, I'm scared of that, but it's just...
But, but close?
Yes, yes, close today. Based upon Mississippi's development of it, if it's following what is already there, Mr. Mayor, it's gonna be pretty close today.
Uh, then basically what you're asking tonight is a, is to, uh, for us to eliminate any claim on these old easements and, uh, gravel driveway, or they're basically the old man calls, uh, Mulgrove.
Yes, sir. We were considering asking, and, kind of, the city here was a nineteen, it was actually a set of covenants that were going on with urban renewal, and they were supposed to terminate in nineteen ninety-nine. And we were gonna ask for some verification from the city of whether or not they ever amended those covenants. We can't find anything in the public record where, up under paragraph ten of those covenants, where the city ever did any time of amendment to extending those covenants.
We feel like that it would just let it, it would just expire. Do we have any discussion for the board about what they're asking? Do we have a motion that we approve of their request?
Ms. Mayor, before a motion, uh, Mr. Faber, have you reviewed this particular matter, any particular problems on vacation and so forth?
No. I, I, yes, and answering your question, yes, I reviewed the matter. No, I don't see any particular problems. Uh, I would like it to be an abandonment, permanent abandonment, than a vacation, but you know the reason why, because the terminology makes a difference, but I'd like to be an abandonment, but, um, I've been assured, my opinion is based on assurances from Mr. Webb, that there is no... that there is no property, landowners, that have to use this access way to their property. And that's the only problem I had. And the other problem I had they've taken care of was that Mississippi State has given us a letter, and they had no objection to their letting land on them, so that's the only problem. I do have a problem with the city issuing a, in a letter of verification that we've never amended the declaration restrictions.
And we will remove that request, Mr. Faber. We have no problem with that. I think we've verified enough that it's never been amended in any manner.
Then I don't, that's the only problems I had with the way we presented. There is one other issue, though, that David, you haven't addressed, that they need to understand, is there's that TVA easement that Ed wrote you in that letter about? Explain to them about that.
On the TVA easement, which is going to be down through this portion and then through this portion, was assumed by the city of Starkville. The city of Starkville purchased that TVA easement front TVA. In my discussion with Mr. Haddaway and Mr. Happy Days, that really, there's even a potential possibility that the size of that easement, we might even come back and ask for it to be reduced. We're in the process right now of trying to determine whether we're going underground utilities as opposed to above-ground utilities. And we do know in certain areas, we do want to go underground utilities. And Mr. Haddaway said, Mr. Days as well, to my knowledge, we know the easement's there. We're not asking for that easement to be removed.
We just need to make sure that they need things they pass that needs to be addressed, that specifically exclude any...
Specifically, yes, sir. Specifically excludes the TVA easement. We're not here asking for the TVA easement to be removed whatsoever.
Yeah, I know, but I just want to say that they need to understand that theirs sort needs to be specifically excluded in anything, any ordinance that they pass banning that street. And we need to have some language in that ordinance, and they need to authorize me to put that in.
Yes, sir. We have no problem with that.
That's the only question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, then, I would move that the city of Starkville abandon the four ten-foot-wide utility easements shown on the University Urban Renewal Plat nineteen seventy-one, and that roadway known as Mulgrove Street lying on the property in question. And that the city acknowledge the continued existing Tennessee Valley Authority easement that runs on the east side of Mulgrove Street, continuing past the physical plant building terminating at the corner of Spring Street and Highway Twelve, acknowledge the continued existence of that TVA easement.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to, and you heard the reading of the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Is she unanimous? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
That brings us down to Mr. John David Cole, who is president of the Mississippi State Student Association. And I believe he would like to discuss the action we came to the Bulldog Bash.
Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman, we really appreciate y'all seeing us tonight. We're excited about our two thousand and five Bulldog Bash. Chrissy, right now, is handing you a packet that kind of, this is an introductory letter that I believe y'all received before, and kind of explains some different items about exactly what we're requesting. We're gonna go through that with you guys. Just to introduce myself, I'm John David Cole, and I'm the student association president. Y'all want to keep it simple?
Sure. I'm Tyler Wolf. I am director of external events of the Bulldog Bash Association.
I'm Chrissy Prater. I'm the director of financial support for the Student Association and former director of Bulldog Bash.
And also Lauren Burns, who is our co-director of external events, who's been heavily working with our department heads, working on kind of getting some of these things lined up. She was unable to attend tonight because she's gone through a re-rush, and she's not feeling too well. So our thoughts are with her. But anyway, we thank you for seeing us tonight. We're excited about it. We really feel like Bulldog Bash is just a great thing that continues to link the city with the university and the students, and we appreciate y'all's continued support. Kind of to go over a timeline of what we're behind the cover letter that we've provided you with, we've just given a very simple breakdown of what will transpire over the event. It is September twenty-third, which is the night before the Georgia game. And six-thirty a.m. that morning, we'll have construction of the main stage. Basically, you know, we'll actually crew in, just a ton of students out there, you know, blood, sweat, tears, trying to get the stage up as much as we can. Side stages will commence at nine o'clock. Those are the auxiliary stages that are next to where Bulldog Deli currently sits, and the grill stage, which is, you know, on Maxwell Street. At eleven o'clock, we'll begin loading on the main stage, where we just give the artists paraphernalia up there. And then at five o'clock, that's when fanfare begins. We'll commence with face painting, blow-up games. We're gonna have a lot of things for kids to do out there. We had talked about doing a barbecue, as one of the distinguished board members had wanted to do. But we decided to join up with the Starkville Daily News near Citywide Tailgate. We're excited about that, so we'll be participating with that. Hopefully, things will move downtown, through the cotton district, if that's the only thing that comes from there. We'll have a mechanical bull and food vendors, and at five o'clock, the deli stage will begin playing. Six forty-five, we'll have a pep rally where Coach Green will have a video. He's gonna be whipping his kids into shape for the game the next day, so he's not gonna be able to make it himself. But lots of cheerleaders out there. I'll say a few words, and then the famous murder band will play. And then, of course, seven thirty to one, we'll have our acts, acts play. We've got nine bands for Bulldog Bash this year. Real excited about it. Some high-level bands that we feel will appeal to a broad, a broad variety of interests. We're still under contract with some of the band names, but we feel like we've got a good crew out there. So we'll be announcing those pretty soon as far as who the bands are. We think that'll be a great thing. Let Tyler talk about kind of what Lauren Burns' family has worked out with the different departments, and they've been very helpful in all of their, in their help with us. So Tyler?
Thank you. No warning to the evening. Thanks for letting us come and talk. We have respectfully requested, been in communication with both the chief of police and fire chief as well. And this is just a list of some of the things we have requested, such as we respectfully requested that a fire truck arrive at four p.m. with firemen not only exist for the kids to see a big fire truck, but the firemen are also, of course, trained in paramedic. Also, we've been in talks with Ed Haddaway at the electric company. And this just gives you the two times we requested that he come out and hook our stages into power to have low music. We've also talked to Chief Lindley, and that gives you the schedule of when the barricades will be set up, and just our requests as far as police officers in the area. And then also with Ms. Sharon Boy in the sanitation, September twenty-second, the day before she, or the sanitation department, we requested hook their dumpsters and trash cans to the B.P. parking lot, and we will take care of distributing those throughout the cotton district.
There's also a map of the cotton district place on the back, and you can kind of see where it says B. We have marked the different barricades, and then the stages are the squares on the map. You can kind of see this person out there. Chrissy, do you want to talk about kind of the benefits of...
Basically, this year, as we have every year, we're asking for the city to provide these services. The town has just come over for us. And in exchange for that, the city will receive a sponsorship package from Bulldog Bash, which includes, you know, the city of Starkville logo, all of our promotional materials, T-shirts and posters and everything, as well as inclusion in our radio and TV advertising. So that's just one part that the city of Starkville gets, you know, their logo, and also T-shirts and tickets for VIP room and stuff. But I realize that may not be enough compensation, but we really think that Bulldog Bash does a lot for the city as far as bringing in money for, you know, every business on the university drive that is near the cotton district has told me personally that it's their highest priority not to be here. So it does a lot for the city of Starkville, we believe, in return of asking that you help us out with your services so that we can allow Bulldog Bash to continue.
Mr. Mayor, Board, do y'all have any questions for us concerning Bulldog Bash?
Actually, I wanted to, if you'll mind, address Chief Lindley just for a moment. Chief, you and I had talked before, and I just wanted to ask as a matter of public record, is there money in the overtime budget to pay for the police protection for this event without any compromise to city services?
This is gonna be the end of our post here, so we might have to switch to one line. I need to go over to the...
Okay.
Can I recommend a few to...
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. John David, you think you're the best figure for a pep rally in the forties? Probably not. As a matter of fact, this is an old copy. We're gonna put you up there.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to provide these in-kind services? Would you like to take that with a second? We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Very good. Thank you very much. Y'all have a pleasant bash, okay?
You will.
This brings us down to citizen involvement.
My name's Aaron Allen. Where it's good is we got the college representative and the prosecutor here. A lot of people, they wanna understand open containers. And if they're caught, what is the penalty, Mr. Prosecutor? If they're caught with open containers.
Open container in the city of Starkville?
City of Starkville.
The fine is up to two hundred dollars.
If the sororities get caught with on campus, Richard, what is the penalty?
I'm not sure what the on-campus penalty is.
Jefferson Street is need to be looked at by whoever the aldermen is saying makes the vice of the race.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, the Board of Alderman, Alter Flady and myself, and my homie, Mr. Warren Perkins.
Thank you very much.
I'm Dorothy Addison, and I reside at eighty-nine and Natchez. On Friday, I got a big shop Friday at my house. My bill came for my Starville Electric Department. And my bill came last month. It was ninety-four eighty-two. This month, my bill was six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Must have kept winning too.
I think that's enough for you and me too, PC. I shared it with you. That's why, you know, I'm coming to ask that.
Are you comparing the electric bill or just the whole bill with water and sewer?
The whole bill.
The whole bill.
And so I immediately got on the telephone, you know, I called up to Starville Electric Department, where I talked to a Mr. Shane Grant, and I were told that it would not change. You know, and I asked him to come back out to meter, to read the meter, you know, because I wanted to know what was the problem. And I was immediately told that it would not change. He said, "I should have known it was a red flag." So I hadn't been to meter school, but you know, I would be willing to go learn, you know, how to read the meter, I'm supposed to learn. When I had the ninety-four dollars and eighty-two cents, I went up and paid. That's what they put in. He said that I hadn't been charged. So what they had to do was come through and make some adjustments on my bill. Well, that's a big bill adjustment, you know. We're in a crunch now where we have higher, we have higher gas rates, we have higher everything. We have to plan month by month with our money, what I do with my money, you know, I have to plan. This is something that, you know, I think is out of control. It's out of my hands. You know, I don't know what to do with it. So, you know, I went up there, money. I had to take off from work. I went up there, money, to, you know, to the city. And they told me that I could put it on planes, you know, but they still don't have my money. Now, I paid my bill and deal with it. I went up there and paid the ninety-four eighty-two, because I thought that's what I owed. You know, I didn't look at anything, but I'm told I should have looked at it. I don't know, but six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, that's my two thousand five.
May I ask a few questions?
Yes, you may.
How many days was your bill read for, for the ninety-dollar?
For the ninety-dollar?
How many days in the cycle?
Okay, what am I paying it at? Because I'm trying to look for...
At the bottom of the bill, Dorothy?
Uh, the bottom of the bill.
The long bill, big bill.
I didn't bring nothing for the ninety-four dollars. I didn't bring nothing. Three cents to that. Mm-hmm. I don't understand. This is the...
And how many days in the six hundred dollar bill?
Thirty-four days.
Thirty-four days. Part of your problem is that you may have been billed for only twenty-five, twenty-eight days in the previous cycle. That, and then you've got an extra five or six days in the current cycle, which may have helped to run it up. That's one possibility. The other possibility is how much of, you what?
It wasn't the money.
No, no, I know that. Let me finish where I'm going through. What, how much of that six hundred is water and sewage?
The electric is, this is only an electric problem. It's five hundred and forty-two dollars on electric. Water and sewer appear to be normal at forty and thirty-six dollars a piece.
But now, I thought we backed up. He told me that it was. They had made, you know, incorrect readings.
They had made incorrect readings, and they were trying to adjust it out.
I'm not trying to adjust it out.
What's the new adjustment amount?
I mean, he said I still had to pay this. Now, he said that was correct. That it was correct. I still gotta pay six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
So obviously, previously, they were not possibly reading your meter correctly.
Yeah, I guess that's the problem.
And so what they want you to do now is resolve all of it, pay me one big lump sum, or pay the plan.
Mr. Haddaway?
Yes, sir.
Can you shed any light on this? Do we have any indication of how many months the meter may not have been read, or if that be the case?
No, sir. I was told, uh, ten, that was a history month before, which is the catch-up film. And we're gonna try to work with this honestly, whatever we can.
Oh, God, I can't hear you, because I gotta pay that bill, man. I need a week.
Dorothy, what was the month before this? In other words, is the ninety-four dollar unusually low?
Is it ninety-four dollars? It's low.
What was the month before? What is it usually running in this time of year?
The month before was like a hundred, a hundred and two dollars. Something like that. It was ninety-four eighty-two. And now it's six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, ninety cents.
They're bringing it down that we need to meter readers somewhere. I ain't satisfied yet, and I don't be satisfied until I get some clear, some placement.
That's my day.
Mr. Haddaway, come on down to the front for this. Give us some direction on this. You heard the testimony. Give us some direction. You know what the policy is. We need to resolve this. So I want to resolve a part of the policy. Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, what I would recommend is let us go back and do a reread on the meter and make sure that indeed the metering is correct. And let me come back to the board with a recommendation as to what we need to do on that. Like I say, I was told that... Like I say, I was told at the time that, uh, it was, uh, a bad read, uh, it was underread last month for the ninety dollars. Like I told Ms. Isaac, you know, we would, we're asking for such a huge amount, all in one fell swoop, but we would work with her, uh, over a period of time to try to resolve this matter. But I think we need to at least substantiate the readings first and make sure that it, that is correct.
Did y'all provide her with a history of the last twelve months on this account?
Uh, I don't know whether she, she was given that or not, but we can't provide that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see Mr. Hattaway, uh, investigate this matter, and I'd like to see it resolved according to our standard policy. Mr. Hattaway, if you could just take the lead on this and work with Ms. Isaac and give us a communication, uh, personally, to appreciate it. And maybe, uh, you could just go report to the mayor, and the mayor will decide whether or not we needed a board action in the next meeting, so, um, we could do that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to see the board actually take it.
Mr. Hattaway, are these, uh, contract meter readers or the city?
No, they're con- they're contractors.
Contractors?
Yes.
And do we have any provision in the contract whereby that a meter reader of the company that's providing this service makes an error like that, they would have some responsibility to this?
Yes, sir. They, uh, they end up with, with a pretty, pretty good penalty.
Well, I think they ought to share some of this responsibility.
Mr. Mayor?
Of following the procedure and reading the meter.
Yourself?
That was part of my comment, what, uh, Alderman Mills just said. But I think in the future, any resident that come with a bill and it's that much discrepancy from the previous months versus what they are showing, uh, you or your employees at that time, that somebody should give them the courtesy of looking into this before they have to come before the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. I think that that's just a courtesy, that these, uh, type of bills should be checked before they are turned away and say, well, we aren't going to do anything, you got to pay it.
Mr. Mayor, one last comment. A call to Ald, uh, to Alderman Mills. I am in strong support what Mr. Mills said. If the, um, contract has clear language, that if the meter reader makes a mistake such as this one, we need to hold them strictly accountable, and that's what I want to see them happen. If we start holding them strictly accountable, we'll get better meter reading results, and we'll have these matters occur again. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see, uh, the company penalized if the contract calls, but I would like to see the stiffest penalty that we can impose against the, uh, the company per the contract. And I'd like to see Mr. Hattaway, uh, personally handle this matter and take the necessary action and report back to you. Then you can decide whether or not any board action is needed on their part.
Can I do that, Ed?
I can.
Thank you very much.
I, I'd like to make a motion, and I, and I appreciate what you said, but I want to make sure, and I'm going to put this in the form of a motion, that you take this under advisement, um, and that you do go ahead and report, uh, back to the mayor, and then ultimately to the board at the next board meeting, the results and, and what your recommendation would be. And the reason why I'm making a motion is to make sure that this account gets put into whatever terminology is it temporary, so that she's not accruing late fees and those type of things that are affecting her credit, et cetera. So, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion, um, if you got all that.
I see. We have a motion and a second, uh, that, uh, you, board members heard it. All those in favor of the motion, unless you have something you'd like to say about it, raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the motion also to put the gentleman, four or five, if I have an objection to, uh, to impose a penalty against the, uh, the meter reader at the maximum rate allowed under the contract, and I want the meter reader to pay that money as soon as possible, if that's an objection.
Can I ask one question? Sure, Mr. Hattaway. Is the contract you're referring to is the one that's up for renewal that I'm reviewing right now?
That's correct.
Is the contract from January fifth, two thousand and three?
That's correct, yes, sir.
That's the contract you're referring to, the North Mississippi Utility Services Contracting?
That's correct.
Mr. Perkins, it looks like upon review, the con- and I have not sat down and gone through a new review of the contract, is asked to do this one, and it appears that the language that Mr. Hattaway is referring to is, is standard indemnification language, such as their, the city's held liable, they agreed to indemnify it if it's because of their ineptness. So, I don't see any type, and there is a liquidated damages provision in here that provides if we, if they terminate this contract and we have to hire new employees to go out and do these things, they pay liquidated damages in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. But as far as any specific consequences that they incur as a result of this, unless it's, unless, uh, we have, it would be under the indemnification clause of the contract.
Right, and with my, my motion, the language that says this only is the contract provides for it. Mr. Mayor, you should further review that and let us know the next meeting.
I just wanted to let you know.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. If you're unanimous.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to, uh, take three minutes? I'm going to use the, this.
Mayor Boyd, uh, I was going to grant you a letter, but my job is some demanding that I had to appear before you. Some of you may know that, uh, on August twenty-sixth, the Starkville High School is going to, uh, retire my son Travis Outlaw's jersey at a football game against Louisville. And we are respectfully requesting the members of the board to participate, come and, uh, take part in this again. It's going to be August twenty-sixth, um, halftime, the Starkville Louisville game at the Starkville Yellow Jacket Field. And we would very much like to sit there.
Thank you.
Uh, halftime at the football game. Football game starts at seven.
August twenty-sixth. Does that mean we all get in free? Anybody else that would like to get up and have three minutes?
Can you employ?
Sure, you, you want to drive the board or whatever?
No, no, I'm not driving. I just want to go back a step if I can, honestly can. Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, concerning the Senate agenda, I've requested the authorization to advertise the seal fees for the black, for the garbage bags. Uh, we should have them to wait until September the sixth, the next meeting. Uh, October being, won't be, won't be delivering out bags in October. I need to get this started as soon as possible. And I'd like for you to rethink this, that I have them on, on hand, I have to advertise, get the bids in.
The Senate agenda was approved.
What did you give us?
It was approved.
Your bag's on the way.
I think, Mayor.
Just find some free football.
I think what she's saying is, is that it was approved to advertise, but not to actually accept the bids until after the next voting. And I think that's what she's, uh...
You're, uh, okay, what you're saying is that we've approved the, uh, to advertise for the bid, and the bids will not be open and available for the, uh, September board meeting. And what you're trying to, would like for us to do is open the bids and accept the bid before the next board meeting?
Unless you all would call him a call, maybe, for the bags.
Well, I don't know if I would have a call, maybe we might get halftime football game on August twenty-sixth.
I'll, I'll, I'll do the best I can for getting the name of the man.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this will bring us down to board business and considerations, uh, relative to the interviews and appointments to fill vacancies on the board's commission. The first one we have is the airport commission. We have, uh, one unexpected term to do, and the first person on the airport that I have a letter from, and I believe we have a late incoming letter. Did we not, uh, came in on the airport board? Did we not get a late?
Yes, sir, and everyone has a concert.
Uh, and which part of all this stuff that we have is?
It's the, um, Andrew, Andrew Escondin.
Okay, alright. I haven't seen it, Mr. Mayor. I guess it's somewhere, it's on the table somewhere. Give him this. Alright. First person, I believe, is, uh, Jim, it, uh, Rich. Can you hear? Would you like to come up, please, and speak to this group? How you doing this evening?
I'm doing great. Just a second. I did not come prepared to do this, so what do I need to do?
Just to sit there for the elimination questions.
I can do that.
You got any free football tickets yet?
I'm an official, I get in free.
Uh, uh, he has applied for the airport board, and do we have anyone that'd like to ask questions of him? I do know he's a pilot. Uh, there's a letter in your packet pertaining to what he feels like his qualifications are. He'd even ride his bicycle out there to get on the plane.
I've been knowing Jim for quite some time, uh, probably more along with my life, about thirty years. And, uh, he does a good job in his time he has attempted to endeavor, and I would, uh, I would highly recommend him being on the board.
Okay. Do, do, and the rest of you have questions that you would like to ask?
Would you just like to ask if you just know that's why you'd like to serve on the board?
Well, uh, one thing, community, imagine this, and there's some things that, uh, I think Brian feels want to be involved in in the future, and this city is growing and going, and there's things that are going to be taking place, and I'd like to be a part of it.
Anyone else got questions? Jim? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Uh, the next person that has applied for the same one position is Andrew Rendon. Is he here tonight? I think that we got his application in very late, like this evening, and we still decided that we would put it, uh, before you. I think I'll have you have a letter there to, uh, read. He's not here to have any questions, nor does appear he's got any football tickets. Okay, we have these two candidates for the airport board. Do I hear a motion or, uh, regarding filling that?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint, give him a reg, uh, airport board.
Second. We have a motion and a second that we appoint, uh, Jim to the airport board. All those in favor, please raise your hands. If you're unanimous. Okay. Thank you. This brings us down to, uh, planning and zoning, uh, potential members, and we will start with Ward Four. I think we have a person who has applied for that position, is Patrick Mordine.
Questions, please?
Just ask you the same question I asked Dr. Richardson. Why is it that you're applying to, uh, be on the planning and zoning commission?
Um, I'd like to say that I've lived in many different parts of the world. Uh, I've lived in small towns in Sweden. I've lived in metropolitan areas in Sweden. I've lived in New Orleans. I've lived in Starkville. I've lived in Spurton, Chicago. And there's one place that I've chosen to make my home, and that's Starkville, Mississippi. Uh, and Starkville, Mississippi is, uh, I consider a very, uh, pleasant, uh, comfortable, small town to live in. And I've chosen to live here, and I'd like to, uh, get involved in the future of the community.
I think this is the second time that Mr. Mordine has applied for a position on the, uh, planning and zoning commission. This is good for Ward.
I'd just like to say that as a, the Ward Four representative, I would first recommend Patrick. I've spoken to him before on this, and we've talked about everything. Small town growth to urban sprawl, and he seems to be really educated and efficient.
Corey, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Okay, I'd like to motion as we proceed to allow Patrick Mordine to be on the planning and zoning board.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hands, please. We're getting exercise tonight. It's a seven overall graduation, Mr. Mordine.
Thank you.
Uh, that brings us up to Ward Six, and we have a Mr. Lovelace that lives on Trotter Lane. Is he here? Is he good tonight? Has, uh, written a letter, and I got that on Monday, and I don't know if it's in your packet. I think it got kind of, uh, lost in transmission, transition of trying to get it into your packet and otherwise. Uh, he's not here, and then we have to have a Mr. Evans. Does he hear here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you come up, please, sir? How you doing this evening?
Good evening, citizens. How are you doing? Mr. Evans, you heard just the other question. Just a brief tell of the mayor of the board, while you're interested, tell a brief about your family background, your, uh, brief about your church background, how long you've been in Starkville. I'm going to raise your hand.
I've been in Starkville since October nineteen ninety-two. Uh, and I do plan on making Starkville my home. Uh, I've, I've enjoyed living here. Uh, one of the interests I have is the growth of the government of Starkville, and along with the preservation of, uh, residential communities. So, it's just a keen interest into, uh, keeping the growth going, but also preserving the, uh, residential communities. Married, three children.
Mr. Evans, I read your letter. I'm grateful, and I encourage you to apply. Of course, we attended the church together. We've been actively involved in the church, so I certainly support your, um, your, uh, desire to be on the planning and zoning commission. I'm going to get you on the floor. You have to, I'm going to put a motion on the floor to appoint you for a six-year term. How many of you on the floor are this time proposing?
Uh...
Who were the other candidates? They said there was one, and we had the letter or anything, probably. I haven't seen them.
Uh, it was brought into the office yesterday, and it got, uh, apparently misplaced in the transmission of, of trying to get it into the packet, some other issues like that. But his wife did come in and make his application, uh, in regard of being, he, he lives on, uh, Trotter Lane, I believe, which is in Ward Six. Well, it just seems to me in the spirit of fairness, we all have a chance to read what we've got left.
Oh, Mr. McLauren, I'm, I'm, I asked Mr. Evans to be candid with the board to apply to this position. I have not seen a letter. If the letter's been submitted, I want to do it now, possibly. I'm going to make a motion. This is my word. I'm going to make a recommendation. I'm going to get up and down, vote on this. Mr. Mayor, we have the letter. I mean, the matter's on the floor.
Uh, I'm saying that the, the letter got, uh, lost, uh, from Mr. Lovelace in the transmission from, uh, yesterday, until this evening's, uh... See, we're asking citizens to submit letters and indications of interest, and they do so. And we're sitting here talking about, well, the letter got lost, sorry, we don't have it. Uh, awfully sloppy at best in terms of procedure, where someone's taken the time and effort to write a letter, and we don't have it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Mr. Rayfield Evans Jr. be appointed to serve a six-year term on the Starkville Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six, thank you, sir. Uh, we have a Mr. Moore. Is that who?
John Moore.
John Moore. How you doing? Been a long time, hasn't it?
Been a long time.
Mr. Moore, I'm being the representative from Ward Seven. If you would just briefly give everyone some information that they may want to know, and I say briefly because you've been around here and in the school system for so many years that we don't want to hear it all.
Well, I'm, I'm in construction, so that's, you know, kind of my heart, and if I could serve on your board and be of, uh, you know, service, that would be the, uh, the best for us. So, as a result of that, I, I did apply to, to serve on the planning and zoning commission board. I believe I could, you know, run the service. I believe I could, you know, run the service in that, in that area, Starkville, with the city with a, that's on the move, you know, make tremendous strides, and I'd like to be a, a part of that, uh, be, you know, a part of that property.
Uh, John Moore has been a good, productive citizen of this community for lots of years, and we appreciate his efforts in, at school and the vote text, uh, of himself. If you would like to make that motion, it'd be my pleasure to second it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that Mr. John Moore be representative on the planning and zoning commission.
Second. We have a motion to the second, that Mr. Moore be the nominee for Ward Seven, I believe.
It is.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I believe that concludes the number of people that had applied for the vacant position. There's still these, uh, one position...
Seventy-five, no more than eleven, is what you're...
No, we don't know. I think, I think they might have seen Mr. Moore's right.
Mr. Mayor, could we take a final, please?
I've got a letter here, I got late this afternoon. If we're gonna have a rule says something, I'd like to, we'd make copies and let the board look at it. If I'm long enough suffocation, they could sort of go and claim it.
Okay.
I got it this evening, I talked to him yesterday.
Is this a person that's applied in your ward?
Yeah, he emailed that to me about four thirty this afternoon.
Why don't we take a, a short five-minute recess, and maybe we can get some copies there, pass that around, we'll have one other person.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia Hall County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Did everybody get a copy of the, uh, letter for the planning and zoning commissioner for Ward Two? Michael Gann? Is he here tonight?
No, he's not here.
Okay, we have a letter in front of us, it, uh, uh, Jim, would you like to discuss this individual?
Well, uh, I've been knowing him quite some time, he lives in Long Mutter Suffolk, and, uh, he's got a, um, good background, and is, uh, associated with the planning and zoning commission. He's, you know, he's on several boards, you may see on his resume. He's affiliated with East Mississippi Community College, uh, and he's director of the Public Information and Recruiting. And I think he would, uh, do a good job, uh, on the board, and he, uh, came by, uh, yesterday morning, and asked me, uh, would I recommend to be, be on the board? And, uh, I'd be pleased to make a motion that we accept him, um, for serving on the board from Ward Two.
My pleasure to second it, to find you, uh, man.
We have a motion to the second for Mr. Gann be on the planning and zoning commission for Ward Two. All those in favor, please, we have a motion to the second.
This is for the unexpired term?
Oh, yes, the unexpired term of, of the one that was vacated when the, the first moved out of, uh...
How many years left on that term?
I do not know without, without looking.
Thanks.
When, when does it go off, Jim?
Oh, eight. I just wanted to make sure, uh...
It's, uh, it's filling, unexpired.
Jim, it's for the remainder of the term on that guy, so it won't be a full term.
Yeah, you don't know how many years, but...
It'll be, uh...
They said, uh...
They're on expired oh-eight.
Yeah, expired oh-eight, about, uh, two and a half, three years.
Three years, so...
We have a motion to the second, all those in favor, please, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Uh, we would like to revisit just one moment, the, uh, consent agenda, in which it pertains to, uh, PC Ward item, say, consent.
It's the one on page five of five, the item designated E, and it's the request for the pay application to Sam Oswald's son's construction at, at, uh, Bryanfield Airport, the parking lot. The consent agenda says final pay application, actually, it, it is the second pay application, a final that will be forthcoming before too long, so it's not final, it's second.
Does everybody have that as part of notation and correction? Something, do you have a question?
No, I'll say it.
All right, we will continue with the airport, and you have in front of you, uh, the completed airport layout plan as recommended by the airport board. And I believe what they're requesting is, uh, is a approval of this as recommended by the airport board.
Mr. Lincoln is here.
Yeah, where is it? Yeah, where is Rod? Where are you, Rod? Get up here and let us chastise.
Good evening, Mayor Ford.
How are you? Talk us through what we're trying to recommend here, first. I mean, uh, approval of the recommendations you're wanting to make.
This is something that's been in the works for several years, and just behind, through the final stages, and the FAA is recommending we get this approved, so we can go on with the plans with the airport.
What, have they reviewed it and given their, uh, let their approval to it?
That FAA has, uh, in the airport, what they're...
Tell us the purpose of the layout plan. What are we trying to do?
Preserve what's there and expand the airport at the same time.
Would it be correct, Rodney, to describe this sort of the comprehensive plan for the airport? The long, the long-term plan for the airport? Well, but I mean, just in terms of, it's got a proposed property line versus property line. Um, it's got, you know, hangers on the opposite side that aren't, don't currently exist, so there's, it's the, sort of the expansion plan of wishes for the, for the airport.
Like you can see, uh, the proposed property lines on the west side and the regular property lines. One thing involved there, there's, uh, some houses in Greta Lane, Greta Lane's actually on the airport property, in Greta Lane, according to this plan here with the authorities. Those houses will have to be moved back, they got further property, they can move them back towards twenty-five. We have to have five hundred feet from the center of the runway, either side of it, for this ILS computer approach, and it will be from the south of it. Do you get that in there, the large jets will come, and large hangers will be built?
How many years we have to move Greta Lane?
Several, I'm sure.
Well, by large jets, define that a little better, we're not talking...
Oh, we're not talking too much right now, it's just like, this is what we're...
Things way to the east, to the west of the houses.
It's five hundred foot, make that that, it's not a distance. In case of this approach, you could go fly on, or something like that.
Uh, of course, airport layout plan like this is essential for, uh, receipt of federal and state funding for improvements to the airport, it's something that is done periodically, and it's happened again. Uh, this Greta Lane thing is gonna be a thing, let me tell you.
It is.
Uh, real unpleasant, it will be, so...
I have a question pertaining to its entrance down here on Highway Twelve. Is that, uh, uh, does part of this black line that you have there, is that not, uh, encroached upon the Kia constrictor ship that never got done? You see that, where Greta Lane comes in off of Highway, uh, Twelve, right there?
That's, that's, uh, above ground level.
That's, that black line represents that you can't get above the ground right there, but we can have that road access to Greta Lane to come in on that western side of everybody's property, is that correct? All right, and so your new property line, uh, takes into consideration most of Greta Lane, I believe. Said everybody would have a view of the airplanes landing, but would not have, uh, they could just turn their house around.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the, uh, layout, airport layout plan for Georgia and Bryanfield.
We have a motion that we approve the layout of the proposed airport field, second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, what's the resolution, uh, for the Greta Lane, uh, provision? Make sure, if, if, Mr. Mayor, I can have to hear from you, I can hear from the attorney on how, what he recommends the layout of this country.
Well, the resolution on Greta Lane is that, uh, the previous board knew that we had a problem there, and nothing, no action was taken, and I guess it was deliberately not taken, so that this new board would have to take it up. Uh, and you're dealing with people's properties and so forth. It's also been suggested that, uh, uh, this road was not legally placed there, that it just kind of appeared. I don't know how the heck a road just kind of appears, but it obviously is one that may have just appeared to accommodate those houses back before the city extended to that particular area. Also appears that, uh, uh, that we need to provide some type of ingress egress to the folks who live there. So, that's the reason I asked the question, how many years do we have in order to get this collected, this corrected, it's present budget situation? Mr. Cox, I think you'd agree, we don't really have the monies too much.
We're not currently budgeted for this, no.
So that's pretty where we're standing right there, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir.
I would suspect that the next meeting of the airport, uh, decision since this is approved, they will be petitioned to see if, uh, wrecked or petitioned.
You just said we'd have cut the years, PC.
Uh, uh, Mayor, just one word, you, you used the term previous administration, it's so-and-so.
Yes, yes.
Previous four administrations, it's so-and-so, so let's get our timeframe right.
Well, that's interesting, they sure didn't ha- uh, act like they had any problem with it in the last administration, where they knew about it for, uh, ten or fifteen years prior to that, or three, three. Uh, we have a motion to the second, Rod, do you have some legal thoughts in regard to, uh, what we're gonna have to do there?
It's the first time I've seen the plan, obviously, and I wasn't aware of you taking over Greta Lane and cutting off the access to these people's property, or Greta Lane is currently on the airport property.
They're not necessarily taking over, because it's a, it's never been a, I don't know how you can have a road that's not really a road.
The airport put the road in years ago for access to the electronics on that side of the field. These people have had land there, and what I've been told is I started building houses on the land used as an access road, they've been asked for it to be paid, and that's been turned down, because the city doesn't have to upraise something, it's not good enough.
Makes sense, I was at that board meeting.
I was there, too. Uh, I, I don't know if it has to do with what we're talking about here, but it does. You said that they, all of the residents in there, all the houses would have to be moved. Now, is that gonna be at their expense? Please don't tell me we're gonna have to pay for that, too.
They have property deep enough that it goes back to...
I think that's what I thought I heard you say, so that meant that they would have to move their houses. Budget Chairman, I looked at you when I had that thought.
The houses would have to be moved? I thought in this map right here that they're outside of your property line.
Well, the proposed, see the proposed line?
Yeah.
That's, that's the white boundary line, and you see the white strip in there, twenty-five.
So who's gonna pay then for that property that they're going?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would suggest that all this conversation, all the premature, we've got a lot of stuff that's got research done, and no answers could be given tonight about any of this.
I think this ought to be taken under advisement, for the Greta Lane project, uh, decision. Proposed property line, right here, okay, which is gonna encroach upon these people's properties right there. So who's gonna pay for these folks' houses?
If I may, just having been on the airport board for just a short period of time, one of the things you might want to look at is that it is a proposed property line, if, if we get funding to do it, it's the ideal for the airport, rather than what currently exists. It allows the airport minimums to be such that you can operate the larger aircraft at the lower, um, weather minimum. Uh, as it stands right now, the airport operates fine, but in the ideal world, we would like to acquire property, move houses, have access to allow some, uh, more, um, sophisticated, uh, equipment to come into the, into the airport and, and function up at its highest, highest level. So, it's like a comprehensive plan, it may or it may not be exactly that, but that's the ideal. If we acquire property, if we get the federal funding for, um, expanding the airport, or expanding airport property so that it can function at its highest level, then we would want to, you know, include moving houses and taking, uh, taking Greta Lane and turning it into access to hangers on the other side, for example. I mean, there are just other things that you can do with it, but that's sort of the potential comprehensive plan for the airport. It may or may not come past exactly that way.
So then, just as a point of clarification, if we were to pass this, then if you decided at some point in the future that you did want to expand this far out, you would, the airport board itself, I mean, would take, would take it under their own?
We're not going to do anything without more approval. I mean, but, you know, you go forward, it allows you to go forward with funding, uh, requests and grant requests in order to expand, to, to widen out your clearway zone, allow you to just, you know, have lower minimums to bring some people in. Instead of going to GTR, they'd come here because they were capable of getting in in bad weather, for example. So, it's a future use.
Uh, Lynn, if we change the plan, uh, uh, we won't be able to go back and ask for additional monies in order to, say, uh, pay these people for properties that we are, talk, talk on that.
Well, offhand, I'd say, you know, that'd be one of the things that you'd ask for some federal monies to do. I mean, that, you know, for example, you know, DFW certainly doesn't, I mean, it rises to a much higher level than we are, but, you know, they got money to buy property from people and move them out to expand their airport. We might have some funding available to, you know, move those houses back, expand the property, it's, you know, if the city wanted to do it on its own, because of the expansion for, you know, future land use, comprehensive plan, et cetera. I mean, after all, the airport is part of the city, and what the plan is for the city would incorporate what the airport's going to do, that'd be one thing. Um, but, you know, you might have some grant monies available to you, because you're adopting a plan that the FAA has approved, and, and thinks is a good thing for future of the airport.
Would you like to speak on this, Mr. Attorney?
Let me, like, two points. You said that you're gonna use this plan to get the money approved.
Well, I, I'm saying that, that's, that is my perception of possibility, Rodney, you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got to adopt a plan that the FAA is going to approve of in order to...
Correct, but you can't go back after you've, if the plan's been approved and you've gotten the funding, you can't go back and change the plan, correct?
I don't know that for a fact. I, I, I mean, once you get, then, I would think you can modify anything at some point in time, but you just have to go back through the hoops of getting FAA approval, and then they'd have to approve it based on a change in status or a change in something else that's going on. Um, they, they've looked at this thing, uh, and Rodney said it's been ongoing for a couple of years, but, you know, if you decide to change it, then it may change how the FAA views, what they're willing to fund, for example. for example. But you've got to have some plan for them to then come forward with some money for you to proceed. I mean, for them to justify giving dollars, you've got to have a plan for them.
But, in the, I'm talking about when you requesting the money for the, I'm talking about, you can't come back and change the boundary lines after you've already gotten the money based on this plan?
Probably not. Depends on what you're asking for, based on that plan. You could be asking for.
FAA won't have to have a reason why you request it, nor why you request it.
Or why you're requesting, different.
But how can we go ahead and ask for this grant money if we don't know what it's gonna cost to get these houses and what we have to do?
Well, but we haven't asked for grant money. I'm just saying that in order to ask for anything at all, you've got to have some sort of plan. And they, this is what they pass off on. Now, if we don't wanna do this, if we wanna say, you know, we're gonna accept the airport as it currently sits, the only improvements we're gonna make are based on our current land, um, our current land, um, that's already, you know, part of what we own without going out and having any expansion, then that's a different animal altogether. You just have to provide a different concept to the FAA.
Mr. Mayor and Board, this, this subject certainly is a potential litigation. I would recommend that if we don't discuss this tonight, we continue that in executive session.
I think we should. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
Second.
Uh, that we approve this plan. And you've heard all the potential problems that we might have by approving it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I think I will withdraw my motion to approve the plan. Mr. Corey, if you would withdraw your second until we decide whether or not we can discuss it later tonight or in some subsequent time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you. A discussion of a work session or retreat for the mayor and board?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is my agenda, but I'd like to make a motion prior to that. Um, in conjunction with the retirement of his jersey at Starfall High School and in recognition of his outstanding athletic achievement, I move that we declare August twenty-sixth as Travis Outlaw Day in Starfall. And that on August twenty-sixth, the mayor and board present Mr. Outlaw with his official declaration.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. We have another unanimous vote, thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to the actual agenda item. Um, over the past few days and weeks, many people have asked me, what will the new board and mayor do next? And, uh, that's probably because they really like the progress that they've seen and they want more. Uh, it could also be because they'd like more notification and discussion. Or it also could be that, uh, they're just simply curious. Um, anyway, it appears to me that it's, it's time for this new mayor and board team to get together for a planning session, to set short and long-term goals for us to accomplish this term. And from this session, we'd have clear priorities and an agreed-to agenda. I believe this type of retreat's been done before. Mr. McLaurin, can, can you speak about, uh, perhaps if this has been done in previous sessions? Or is it the same thing?
I bet it has, uh, at the beginning of the last term, such a treat was, a retreat was conducted, uh, the desire being to attempt to come up with some short-term, medium-term, long-range plans for that particular term of office. And it's something that, uh, certainly is recommended by, uh, anyone in any organizational capacity.
Is it something that you facilitated last time? How did that process work?
Uh, I did facilitate last time and would be happy to do so again in terms of the arrangements and so forth for the, for the approval.
Before we schedule, I, I wanna know what, um, some of the, you know, Mr. Cox is just gonna tell when you wanna do this and so decide in what direction we're gonna move from here. I wanna know that's what.
My thought process would be as soon, as soon as is practical for us to do that. Um, I know that we have MML coming up, um, of course, also have significant budget obligations. I, I just think as, as we're going forward, um, we need to be able to communicate the top three things that, um, that we as a team are working on. And it seemed like the best way to do that would be in a retreat-type setting where we can really vision out, um, what the next few years that, uh, this mayor and board are gonna accomplish. But it's as soon as practical. I certainly don't have a, a thought process of it's gonna be next week. It's just whenever we can, uh, schedule that thing and have us all get together.
Mr. Mayor and my colleagues at this table, my preference is, is that I have no objection to doing that, but I certainly would like to see that our mayor chair that in a meeting is to, uh, is the person who has, uh, the authority by statute to have superintendent authority to control municipal affairs. So I, I would like to see him to be the leader as to, uh, the, the direction that we, we take so to give some, some leadership ideas. So I have no objection to that ultimately. I certainly withhold, uh, just because if you, um, you're gonna offer a motion that you're gonna offer the mayor, uh, as the, uh, the chairperson of this particular retreat. So if you wanna make a motion about chair, when you want to be here, so I certainly support it. But I'd say my preference would be for the mayor to chair, he needs to be the leader of the city.
Any other comments before I make the motion? I don't know if that's even a parliamentary procedure. Are, are you gonna make a base specific motion? I, I was not planning on it. It's gonna be as soon as practical, but that's fine. Well, then I'd like to, to move the city's schedule a, a planning session for the mayor and board and, and others as necessary, as soon as practical. Um, and like to appoint Alderman McLaurin as, as coordinator and, and also have him work with, um, Mayor Camp to, uh, to have this, uh, session established. And it's certainly not a, um, it's just how do we most effectively do this and how do we get it done? Not a, um, any attempt to change who's responsible for what. I believe, I know.
Mr. Mayor, Matt, wait up for.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I, I certainly like the idea and certainly just moving the city progressively forward, but, but we, you know, we need to keep things focused. Uh, we, we, we need to, to, to recognize the, the appropriate leadership. And, and, and the most, the core thing to do is, is to recognize the, the mayor. I mean, uh, there, there's no reason that the mayor should not be the, the chairperson. It may be trivial to some, but, but it's important to me. Uh, the, the mayor was elected by the citizens of the city of Starfall to be the mayor, so let's hear from him what his goals are. So, if we could just defeat this motion, I'll turn around and offer another motion for the mayor to be the chairperson.
Let's let the two office co-chair this thing. I'm bigger than he is and stronger than, uh, than I can handle this.
Well, I have no objection since the mayor is, is.
No, I'm loud.
That's what he is. Sometimes I spare a fact.
If, if the gentleman from Ward Fire would, would, would offer that amendment to his motion, I certainly support it.
Yeah, I, I think that was the way it was originally stated, although not nearly as eloquently that they would co-chair. And then, and again, the whole intention was so that we could be on the same page and be a team.
Get everybody to attend this, I'm sure.
But I just wanna make it directly clear.
No, no, that's no problem.
Yes, sir. So, that's my permission. Alright, let's start again. But, uh, the city's schedule a planning session for the mayor and board and others as necessary, as soon as, as is practical. And appoint co-chair persons Alderman McLaurin and Mayor Camp to facilitate and coordinate said session.
Alright, we have a motion with a second. All of the, uh, y'all understand the motion? We're gonna have a treat somewhere, alright? Maybe at the beach, who the hell knows? Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Seven of them, I don't know, do that. We're gonna set a time. Mr. McLaurin and I will try to get it where it'll fit everybody's schedule so that we can all, uh, do this. Uh, acceleration of the Buddy Richmond sanitary sewer claim.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I ask that this item be put on the agenda for discussion and hopefully some action here. Uh, you recall when we were talking with Dorothy Isaac about, uh, the problem she was having with a utility bill? And Alderman Perkins, uh, talked at length about how we should follow the city's, uh, process or procedure. Of course, I would add to that and make the point that certainly a city's process and procedure ought to be fair and equitable. And indeed, you will recall with all of these utility complaints that have occurred within the last, uh, several months, uh, there is a committee that's going to look at this procedure to make sure that it's fair and equitable. Here we have one of those strange situations that just occurs, uh, somehow in the life of a city. Uh, the bottom line is, we have a house on South Montgomery Street, which, the residents of which have been paying sanitary sewer charges for some considerable number of years. And we discover in recent months that the house is not even hooked to the city's sanitary sewer system. What, of course, is fair and equitable is some type of reparation, uh, to the, uh, the owner of the property. Of course, uh, and we can get back into history, talking with some of you historians, with, uh, Mr. Stanley Carroll was involved, uh, the Hartnesses were involved. It goes way back, uh, uh, to nineteen fifty-nine, sixty and so forth. But we have a situation where a house paid sewer charges, of course, to different people, different times in the house. Uh, but for a service, where a service did not exist. Uh, now, the mayor tells me, based on, and before I make a motion on this, that, uh, the city engineer might have some comments and some suggestions on how might best be, uh, processed to handle this. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you talk a little bit about this and let's see where we are?
We are currently trying to negotiate the easement for some property, across the property that this same gentleman owns, south of town, around the West River plant. And rather than to try to pay him back what he claims, which we don't necessarily agree on the total amount, that we might, uh, offer him some money for the easement in lieu of payback for the sewer. Whereas normally we encourage him to give us the sewer, the easements, no charge. Rather than pay him back, it, it, it gives us, it'll give us some legal basis, I think, to give him some money. Because if, if, or if we could go back, if there was ever a charge on the soundation, it was only ninety-seven.
Well, of course, I think that is because the records are not, they're very hard to find at that time.
That could be. But we can't, we can't prove it, nor can he prove it. We did see the sewer line, there's no evidence of tap ever being in there. He says that his, his stepfather, father-in-law tapped that line years ago. No, no evidence of that. Somewhere along the line, though, they could have kept him or he's gave a sewer fee for that. The building office and that would not know that he didn't have sewer.
One could assume, could you not, that whenever the city charged, started charging fees for connections and sanitary sewer treatment and so forth, then that resident started paying.
His cumulative, uh, paid much for about seven hundred and twenty-one dollars back from nineteen ninety-seven. Perhaps the house is probably fifty years old.
Uh, yeah, you know, we'd be at least twenty-five or thirty years of our potential, uh, potential payment.
Well, the city of Starfall building him for this.
Yeah.
How would they constitute a bill? Was there, how would they come up with a amount?
Uh, it, it's whatever the city charged for sanitary sewer service over those period of years.
It was just a straight fee.
It was based on the amount of water.
Water use, like, essentially today.
We, we don't know anything past prior to ninety-seven, whether that would be charged or not because the records don't look like it's proven.
We don't have the records, is the point.
He, he wants to think there was. We don't, we can't prove one way or the other. But we know he used about eight hundred dollars worth, or paid eight hundred dollars worth of sewer fee since ninety-seven.
But we could be talking about twenty years prior.
His total bill that he would like to be reimbursed for is about thirty-two hundred dollars.
Which was the cost, uh, of?
Adding a sewer line down to.
Putting it to the sewer line.
And then a sewer's tap that, uh, Mr. Webb charged him for.
Uh, Bill, of course, I, I understand what you're saying about the easements on the other thing and we hope people will give them to us and they don't always do that. They may be, uh, wanting payments for easements and all sorts of things. I think that's adding up yet another complicating factor. Do we anticipate that he's not going to be cooperative on that other project?
Well, I can't speak on that because I haven't dealt with him. But one prior to this one, we had to actually go to him and tell him. I think we started him and tell him, hey, son, it's previous evening and didn't settle it before we actually got to court.
What'd he say, don't debate?
Yeah, well, his son. So who often is in the party with him, of course, and then. Mr. Halloway had been dealing with him on that evening, but I thought, brought it up as a possible solution, but.
What this board done to Mr. McLaurin is there's his hill's property in Sand Road.
Right.
And on that east boundary of the property, there is a sewage line that was, uh, as, that he, uh, easily was planted by Mr. Bruce from two to see it before that sewage line was placed. What we're advocating is, uh, of getting him to actually change the terminology and use of that, uh, sewage line to a utility easement, which would not be encroaching anymore on this property at all. We still accomplish our needs in South.
Other words, allows to install whatever utilities there, which is the way it's done.
That is right, yes.
Mr. Halloway, that's certainly reasonable because I'm very familiar with that last easement. It took us a lot of time to get that easement. We had to get our former city attorney to go to court. And after the progress, start moving in the court system, then they found, came around. We had to spend a lot of time, so I, I support the recommendation.
I feel like this, um, the bill beginning in this situation, the parties, they utilize.
So you're saying that we, uh, agreed to pay Mr. Richmond, uh, some thirty-two hundred and something dollars for the change in easement language? Or the easement along Sand Road?
Yes.
Okay, let's see how that flies. Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move that, uh, the city agreed, uh, find this fact that just compensation for the necessary changes in the sanitary sewer easement along Sand Road from a sanitary sewer easement to a, uh, general utility easement. City find this fact that compensation in the amount of three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents uh, is adequate for some utility change. And offer that to Mr. Richmond for the easement.
You've heard the motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Give everybody a little exercise, looks like a seven of them, thank you. Uh, this brings us down to discuss the authorization of University Drive, Main Street Bike Path. Matt?
Um, earlier this evening, we heard from Patrick Nordin at Starfall a motion about a new proposal, uh, for a bike lane on University Drive. Um, and before we, uh, discuss that further, I thought it'd be appropriate to, uh, hear from the city engineer who actually developed, um, this plan on, um, on your thoughts and, and the recommendations, as well as any specifics of how this might impact the physical nature of the street.
As you can see, I went high-tech in my presentation. Didn't wanna overshadow these other people. Uh, what, what I attempted to do was to, two things. Give, give us a bike path that would be safe and, and consistent all the way through, but not to, uh, diminish the, the travel lanes to where we have an unplaced division, nor give up the needed parking that we don't have to. And what I've done is started from Montgomery Street and going all the way down to the, or end down there is where the, uh, university's bike path starts, right there before, uh, Highway twelve overpass. And as I said before, we, we took the, the street width that we have, which is roughly forty-two and a half feet down here, and it narrows down a little bit as it goes further, further east, getting down to about thirty feet where they actually brought their bike path in. And we put, we put parking, this, this area from Montgomery Street pretty much to over the railroad threshold till you get to, uh, this right there at, uh, Gary Schaefer's office or Ramsey residence just past. just past Ole West Horn Road, there's not any parking to speak of. I think there's two parking places right here, by the gas car. So we didn't have to worry too much about parking. Once we get on past Fellowship down here, we left the parking on the north side in front of the Ramsey's, there's a Koch's residence there, which people are parking there now. There's no parking to speak of on the south side, because we're parking on-site parking for the businesses there. And once we get past Fellowship Street, we flipped the parking over by the cemetery, which goes from Jarnigan all the way down to Fellowship, there's about twenty parking places in there. We put the bike path up against the curb on the north side, just inside the parking on the south side. And then if you just continue that on around, you get past parking, Jarnigan, you have a little bit more parking there before you go into a three-lane situation, like down at the intersection of Norton Ash and University Drive, where we have to have a left turn area, a left turn lane off the university, what is a straight one. The bike path will go without any parking, pass South Mass, because there's no parking in this area at the time. We put the parking on the north side, Catholic Church, none on the south side. The bike path will go through, once we get past the church and the apartments, apartments and condos over on the north side, we basically have off-street parking, so we don't have any parking on that side, we put what parking places again back on the south side, get down to Billy King's Apartments. There's no parking there, because it's a long entrance to a parking lot. And we just work our way on down doing that, in front of the blue buildings and all the models on stand-up, I have a couple of the slaves there, none on the north side, because they're going to be off-street parking. And the same thing down between Mashel and Page, no parking to speak of, it's one of the, none of ours, Bulldog Daddy and the laundry, crossing Chuck's face there. Get past Bulldog, we put it all back on the south, there's apartments, condos on the north side, we have the off-street parking, and so on all the way through, until we kind of back in with the university bike path. At that point, we'll have to cross the one, we'll have to cross the street from their bike path to get on the westbound, can end up there. But that was the plan that they had, they've got bollards and a crosswalk already in place there. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. We do, I went out and surveyed as best I could, the total number of parking places available, about a hundred and ten. We're going to put back, or leave in, I think it was sixty. It doesn't sound real good on a turn up front, and we lose fifty parking places, but you go down the street, and I imagine on football days, and possibly the time when they closed the streets and held a big bash out in there, there'd be a hundred and ten people parked there, otherwise, we're not that being, we're not going to be giving up parking places that were actually utilized on a day-to-day basis. So that, and this would give us an eight-foot parking bay, five feet or six feet, depending on, in some places, we can have six feet bike paths, and two lanes that are inaccessible, eleven feet. I do recommend that we lower the speed limit down to between twenty, twenty-five, or in that range. We will have to put a good bit of graphics, bike symbols and arrows showing the directions of it, as well as our street signs in certain areas, beginning of each intersection, to show that it isn't a deal bike path. The cost of it will basically be painting and signage, and I estimate that to be somewhere between six and twelve thousand dollars, depending on which type of great paint we use.
Have you reviewed this plan with the police chief and the fire chief? I know that they're here all evening, are there any thoughts?
I have.
Chief Blinley?
I think this is a safer plan than we first looked at, and we're going to do it, this is the best solution I would.
Okay.
I'm second that it gives us plenty of room to get our corrupt account, so I'm all invited to this.
Well, I support a more walkable and bikeable Starkville, and this plan, to me, which was of course developed by the city engineer, provides for safe parking, provides for safe entry and exit from businesses and residents, safe bike lanes and safe driving, which would include those emergency vehicles. And while it does reduce parking on this public street, given the physical constraints of University Drive, it appears to be a choice between public on-street parking and safety. And tonight, I think it's the appropriate decision for us to choose safety for those people who are currently on University Drive, whether they be bikers, walkers, or cars. And therefore, I'd like to make a motion tonight that we direct city staff to implement the presented bike lane plan as soon as practical, and also direct the police chief and city engineer to review the speed limit and make any changes as necessary. Second.
I'd like for the city attorney to maybe speak to some issues that might be possible on this.
Mr. Webb, if this bike lane is put in, will we see if it's in violation of any regulations or codes regarding the widths of the streets?
No.
Who will not, or be still in compliance?
Yes.
Okay. The second thing is, if you put a bike lane path in, you have a heightened responsibility to maintain, because you are aware that people are going to be using this bike path for purposes specifically of using a bike.
Obviously.
We've got a responsibility to go in there and look at that lane, and make sure there's nothing in that lane that can cause someone to have an accident as a result of that being on the bike path, because we designated that area, as opposed to us just maintaining our streets and people use the street, you know, with a bike at their own risk, but we need to do that prior to it being opened just for a bike path. And the third thing is, once we do that, we're under a heightened responsibility to maintain it, more than we would be for just maintaining the city street. I think it's a great idea, too, but we need to be aware of that responsibility we're placing on ourselves, you know, the passage.
Matt, are we talking about a trial here, or what?
Well, the original thought process behind a trial of this bike lane was because we were trying to preserve all of the parking, in addition to putting in a bike lane and traffic lanes, and the thought then was, we needed a trial to see if it actually would work. By using the plan that the city engineer developed, we actually are using all of the national standards and guidelines. This is, this would be a plan, in essence, the widths of which are utilized across cities across the country, so the trial thought process, from a safety standpoint, really don't have to bear that thought in mind. So I would prefer us to put down permanent paint, so that we're going down with one application. We basically would be doubling our costs to go with trial paint and then permanent paint, and since, for the reasons what I originally said about, these are national standards and successful across the country, I would recommend one permanent as opposed to trial.
And a loss of how many parking places?
Fifty.
Fifty. That's a challenge.
And I will comment on some of those, as Starkville Motion and others have gone on and talked to these stakeholders, there are several businesses, for example, Rain or Shine, who have requested that they don't need that on-street parking, and it's actually more difficult when there's, or it's unsafe for people to enter and exit their business by having on-street parking in front of them. So I don't want us to overestimate that number, because some of that parking currently was too close to those entry and exit ways, and some of the businesses didn't think it was appropriate to have parking in front of their locations. Now, as soon as I say that, I don't want to underestimate the concerns specifically by the Catholic Church, as they use this public on-street parking for people who attend those services, and as Mr. Nordin said, they did express a concern about the loss of that parking, even with their additional parking facilities that they've been building behind the church itself.
Oh.
I did indeed make a motion.
I am, I guess you could say a charter member of that Starkville In motion group, support bike paths, walking paths, all sorts of things, to improve a variety of living conditions here in Starkville. I am concerned about the loss of parking. I am still concerned about some potential liability issues, you know, as our department head said, safer plan, remember, that's a relative thing. And I also know that we call it permanent temporary, whatever it is, always just temporary, until another vote is taken. It's my pleasure to second the motion.
Thank you.
Oh, he did?
Do you want to say something?
It's my pleasure to comment about them. Yes.
What is speed limit on University Drive now?
Thirty last night.
Thirty?
Yes.
I have a concern about a twenty mile an hour from here to the university. If everybody left here tonight and rode twenty miles an hour home, you will see that that is extremely slow. And we got a tremendous amount of students from University Drive here to the university that use university to go to the campus. And, you know, I don't want to come up with something that's going, as they used to say back in seventy, speed trap. I don't want to see a police car sitting out there driving, I mean, writing tickets like this for the students, they're driving twenty-five miles an hour, twenty-six miles, twenty-eight miles, and it's going to take something to slow that traffic down, twenty miles an hour. I don't, you know, I'm not arguing that it'd be fine if we could, but just putting up some little signs that say twenty miles an hour is not going to slow that traffic down, because these students are, they jump up, probably fifty percent of them are running late, and they're trying to get to school. And twenty miles an hour, they're just not going to drive twenty miles an hour from downtown here to university. And I'm concerned about that. If we're going to do something like that, we need to make some provision to put banners across the street over two hundred yards or something, to let people know that if they're going to use university drive, that they've got to drive to twenty miles an hour, not thirty miles, and thirty-five, but that's probably what we're talking about now.
Doug Devin's got some great ideas that don't work for other things that would bring that to their attention, isn't that right, Doug? Parents, parents, you know, thought about, just put on long streets that don't really strip, strips, that could work.
And I certainly appreciate the comments made all over the mills, and the way we made the motion is for the police chief and the city engineer to review the speed limit, and for them to consider what's in a safe and appropriate speed limit, and it was the recommendation, I believe, of Mr. Nordin to say twenty, but they can come up with, as far as I'm concerned, any number that would be safe.
I'd say twenty-five.
And I'll rely on their professional expertise there.
It would give a certain amount of tolerance.
We've got to get on that.
Tolerance will go on record.
Do we have anybody else that'd like to comment on the bike path that has been proposed? We have a motion and a second, and a re-second to the motion and comments. All those in favor of the proposal, please raise your hand. Looks like we're unanimous again, very good, thank you. This brings us down to the mayor's office, and we have a recommendation to approve of budget amendments for the two thousand four, two thousand five fiscal year. Devin, you're here, you got, do you mind coming up? Matt, are you doing that?
Well, I'll be happy to. What was in the packets and what has been listed on the website is a final budget amendment for the fiscal year oh five. We typically make these budget amendments if there are change in revenues, if there are change in expenditures or thoughts during the year, but this budget amendment is specific to cleaning up or balancing expenditures within a department, and they're primarily what's called an offsetting account. This is, in essence, an accounting change, it has no impact for actual spending or ending fund balance. In addition, we have realized a revenue deficit when a budgeted bond loan didn't materialize during the fiscal year, and we needed to adjust that for that reason. Again, it's an accounting change, it doesn't affect our spending, and it doesn't affect our any fund balances. When the auditors go through, they want to make sure that each budget line item is not over what was originally budgeted, and therefore, you have to make these periodic small changes. And I will say, for the new board, there is state law governing budget amendments, and no revisions may be made during the first three months of a new term, which, of course, we're under, unless a deficit is indicated, and of course, there is one, and also that once this revision has been made, which has to be made in the last regular meeting of August, there'll be no further budget amendments in this fiscal year.
Along those lines, and talking about bulldog badge and money and line items, pay officers and so forth, Chief Blinley, I notice we take a fairly sizable chunk out of police salaries here. Are we sure that there are sufficient funds to pay the overtime and so forth required for that bulldog badge, since this is our last budget amendment?
I'm going to look at Ms. Clark.
In the four hundred group numbers in the police department, they'll be okay, but in the actual one line item of overtime, they are over.
We'll have to transfer from regular salary to overtime, we're over an overtime because we have three officers on military form to Iraq, and while their salary line item, their salaries have been improving in regular salary line item, we've had to supplant their short shifts with overtime, so we are slight.
Oh, let's see, Devin, the budget actually put in the minutes was the standard state department audit for line departmental budget, without the detail of this, that's what I thought, not counting the temporary budget or anything.
So the two hundred line item.
That should be sufficient then, again, yes.
A little taken out of their salary line item.
I would move approval of budget amendment number three, the final budget amendment in this fiscal year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion to approve the budget amendment with a second, all those in favor, please raise your hands. We are unanimous again. That brings us down to Gary, are you still here? Or you're awake?
I'm working on it, thank you.
Gary is here to discuss the municipal justice complex and the electric department plan and the location, and pass out to you, I think that most of you have independently seen this.
I have been working over the last couple weeks with the mayor, and was asked to take a look at a location, a downtown location for the justice complex and the electric department. On the first page, we were looking at Block Eighteen A, which is bounded by, on the north by Highway One eighty-two, on the south by Jefferson Street, the east by Lafayette, and the west by Dr. Connor Drive. That's a two-point-eight acre site, and Lady Cox was wonderful enough to help me look at the assessed value as we were trying to understand how many pieces of... And, uh, Lady Cox was wonderful enough to help me look at the, uh, the assessed value as we were trying to understand, uh, how many pieces of land were there. And, uh, I don't want to suggest that this number has anything to do with purchase price, but this is what these pieces of property are currently on our, uh, books as assessed value from two thousand and two. You can see there are ten pieces of property that make up, uh, block eighteen A and that currently has an assessed value of five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. When we looked at the program, uh, we were looking at the, uh, at three different entities, the police facility, the court and administrative facility and the electric department. As you can see, the police require about thirty thousand square feet. The court and administration require about ten thousand square feet and the electric department would require about ten thousand square feet. For a simple, easy number, uh, the cost estimate I projected to produce a complex of this size would be about seven point nine million dollars. And that does not include site acquisition, but that does include construction, furniture, fixtures, equipment, reimbursable expenses and fees. And if you flip to the second page, which has the colored floor plan drawing, a site plan drawing, to orient you, the main, uh, main street would be on your left and you can, I think, locate courthouse on main street. And as you go down, Dr. Connor Drive, uh, you can spot where the existing, uh, county jail is and of course, lot, block eighteen A sits, uh, in that northeast corner then. And we're looking at producing a building that would be, although it would appear to be a single building under one roof, it would have three parts to it. Uh, the left side of that H plan would be the court. The middle of the H plan would be the entrance to the electric department. And the right side of that plan, which would, uh, parallel highway one eighty-two, would be the police department. Uh, talking to Ed Haddaway, the, uh, the electric department requirements are rather unique in that they have, uh, people that are coming going quickly to box, to pay their electric bill or to, uh, to sign up for electric service. So they need ten to twelve parking spots for quick in and out. They also need the ability to have drop off, uh, pull up and through the matic system, pay your bills. And so that would require, uh, off-street access. And so we're suggesting a courtyard in front that would allow that to take place. And also, uh, we would of course need public place, space in front of the court and in front of the police. And on the backside or the west side, uh, the police facility has specific needs for secure parking. And, uh, and so that area that is behind or to the west of the, uh, police would locate about sixty secure parking spots. And also would give access to the Sally Port, which is the way, uh, people would be brought in and booked. And so that, that you can see has a little access out on the, uh, on the highway one eighty-two. This would also allow a secure access for the judge and prosecutor in the back of court building and would also allow secure access for the electric department. Uh, on the southwest corner, you can see there is still room for additional public parking that would be on that corner. And, uh, this design assumes that we would use the, uh, park, the public parking spots that currently exist behind main street and off of Jefferson. And there are about seventy to seventy-five parking spots there. And so the assumption would be that that's very close to the intersection and could be easily used for public parking during court. And, uh, and anytime they would also need to access this complex. The advantage of using this single site is that we wouldn't have to rework out the utilities that are currently under the streets. And, uh, and when we look at the possibility of maybe using a double site, that could end a major expenditure. So on this one site, we could get the entire complex. There was still, we hope, be a revitalization effort that would encourage other private developers and landowners in that area to develop their properties. And as you can see, they would front nicely onto this complex. Where the complex sits, you still would be able to see from the intersection of, uh, main street and Lafayette, you would be able to see the court as you look down the hill of Lafayette. And as, uh, the public would be driving on one eighty-two, uh, I feel like the location of police department on that street would really be a, uh, good image for our city and certainly secure that area from both sides. You can also see the area behind the court where parking is and the area behind the police would allow us for expansion in the future also. So even though it's a rather tight site, there is additional room for expansion, uh, on that site. If you go to the, uh, third page, this is an aerial perspective of, of what the complex could look like. Uh, the, the goal would be to create, uh, to the east, a, uh, a welcoming public space that would actually work for each of the three entities that are there. You can see there's a courtyard with a flag in front of the court facility. There's a courtyard with a flag in front of the police facility. There's a colonnade that connects those two public images. And in that colonnade would be the location of the entry into the, uh, electric department. And that would have a large lobby space, which is part of their functional requirements. The idea that we would possibly have a clock tower and landscaping that would help establish the edge of Lafayette Street allows to put that quick in and out parking behind there, but still not detract from the public image of the court and the police. And, uh, you can see on the backside of that perspective is where the secured parking area is. You can also see in the background how closely this is located to the existing, uh, county jail, which is where folks that were booked in the police would then be moved to the jail. So very close proximity to that. And, uh, we would be able to certainly meet and, and maintain the landscape ordinance and requirements that, that we would have. The final drawing is a, uh, is a perspective that would be down at, uh, the level if you're driving by in a car. And I feel like the, um, it certainly does have the idea of a complex and the image of a complex, which, uh, I think by sort of having these three entities spreading out, we get much more than two plus two equals five as we drive by. And it has a greater street presence than its actual size, but I still feel that it has a very welcoming and urban feel to it. That's what we've done.
Open for questions.
Mayor, let me briefly say, uh, Mr. Shaffer, we certainly appreciate this presentation that you've done tonight and this is a matter that's been before this community for some time. Mr. Mayor, let me take this opportunity to say, uh, that, uh, I want to personally commend you for your leadership on this matter. And, uh, a lot of time and, and effort has, um, been put into this project and I understand, Mr. Mayor, that the department heads, am I correct, um, the police chief, the electric department and.
All the department heads are very much on board with this particular concept that we have here. They've been, uh, I think fairly impressed with, uh, the approach that we've taken with this. Uh, we're at a point where, uh, we need to make a move in regard to say bringing the bond issue to a vote. Uh, I personally feel that we need to have something for the folks that are going to be voting on this bond issue to see in order to say, get something like this implemented. Uh, we have, uh, and looking at the previous proposal, it was not going to be anywhere near the money that was projected for its construction. And this only represents, uh, what, approximately five hundred thousand dollars more than what the, uh, the previous location, et cetera, was going to represent.
With the projected increase of costs that, that we would have realized over the last year, year and a half.
This puts something in a blighted neighborhood. I don't think that term's supposed to be used anymore. Maybe a tired neighborhood is what I've heard. That, uh, allows for future downtown development. I've heard from many people that, that Starville's considered to be a one-street town, a main-street town. Uh, this certainly begins to set the precedence in order to say developing a more urban feel in our community. Uh, it allows the surrounding areas for upgrading of the quality of the buildings and the businesses and other issues in the surrounding area there that would bring additional tax revenues, uh, onto the city roads.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly like this location. Certainly like, uh, what I've, uh, have been provided with and, uh, I would like to see, uh, the mayor and board to move progressively forward with this. Uh, we need to make this, uh, this a reality as quickly as possible. As the mayor indicated, uh, we need to move, uh, together forward and ensure that the public is well-versed, well-educated in what we are doing. Uh, Mr. Shaffer mentioned about the, the parking, which appears that it was, will not be one. We have the seven plus parking from the city parking where the taxpayers and citizens can park at no, uh, cost. And the area in question is one that, uh, can be revitalized. And Mr. Mayor, if I'm not incorrect, uh, we may be able to, uh, obtain if possible, some, uh, some federal funding that could, uh, help, uh, for, uh, the payment of this, uh, project. And that could, uh, ensure that this seven, uh, plus, um, million dollars that you mentioned may not be a true figure that may be a cost to the city. So I think at this point, we need to, Mr. Mayor, uh, move as forward as quick as we can. And I think the next step would be is to ensure that the public is given an opportunity to see what we have proposed, have some hearings. And so we can get a, a vote set, uh, get this passed as soon as possible so we can make this justice complex, uh, become a reality. And our community will be proud of it and they'll be, uh, proud of the leadership that this mayor and board has, has exemplified on this matter. So whatever you desire to do next, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Thanks. Do we have other comments? Mr. Mills?
What do you, what do you comment on the city hall?
Uh, city hall is, uh, this is a historic building and that it's, uh, uh, built in nineteen thirty-eight. And, uh, it's an art deco building and that, uh, there are many people that feel like that, uh, it should maintain its art deco look. I think even Mr. Shaffer would agree that it has merit as such like this. It's a building that with proper renovation, uh, could really be a very interesting building. This thing goes from this ground floor all the way up, probably about twenty-four foot up into before you even hit rafter. So it has potentially, uh, the shell could lend itself to be a very strong architectural building strictly for just the city hall. I don't know that city hall needs to be there with the police and the electric and these others. We might want to do some things we don't want them to see. Or vice versa, but it.
You know, I'd, I'd like to speak something about, you know, if, if we discussed or if we investigated what the historical status of this building is and.
Uh, we, we presently have some folks that are looking into that. And it's possible if we get this, uh, on the historical preservation group and get it on the list and the register, there's potential that we could get additional, uh, uh, historical preservation funds to go towards the renovation of this building. But I, I feel like the main thing we need to do is maybe set up a direction to where we put the police so that we might can even put them in temporary quarters till we get this other thing done and get a multitude of things going here. But I feel personally, first thing we need to do is to make a decision and directions on the placement of this. One of the things that Mr. Shaffer has pointed out here, that in the electric department, we have approximately two million dollars that is set aside for, uh, implementing a new building for the electric department. And that, uh, we've, that's the reason that the price of this is, is higher than what was previously done because we've added the two million dollars worth of electric department, uh, to this and we've come out with, uh, around eight, eight and a half million. Uh, I asked Ed if he would look also in to see if there were additional grant funds or monies that might be elect, uh, available from TBA in promoting some economic type of stimulus here that we certainly would be doing on this particular part of town. And I feel like that our city hall issue would be a separate issue from this altogether.
Well, I would, but I, you know, the.
But I don't, I don't want it to just kind of fold. That's right, that's right. I don't want it to fold, uh, uh, just because that we're talking about this.
Right. That's why I brought it up, because I don't want citizens to start, oh, so where's, what happened with the city hall?
Right, right.
Uh, another comment I'd like to make, I'd like to see some drawings and specifications of these buildings we put in. And that would let the citizens know what we're doing, what we're going to put in these buildings, what we're going to put in a police department, what we're going to put in the electric building, what are we going to put in the courtroom?
Well, I, I think that's understandable and that, uh, we have only, I'm only authorized to spend about two thousand bucks. And I've, uh, uh, taken it upon myself to say not spend any more than that without, uh, uh, more direction in what we should be doing. And I'm sure Mr. Shaffer would be more than delighted to say, uh, extend his services to, uh, begin to say, come up with some addi- additional ideas and so forth. Am I not right about that?
I couldn't start until tonight.
I see.
Well, I just would like to see some sizes and what we're going, what, what offices we're going to have in East Starville. And I think the general public wants to see this too as well.
Well, I think, I don't think we, uh, need to even try to sell it to the general public until we have a, a much better, uh, uh, and clearer vision of what specifically. And I think that's where you're getting to, is that not correct?
Yes, that's right.
And I, I, I feel like that Gary's certainly got lots of experience at this particular point after having designed the previous, uh, uh, police and municipal, uh, uh, court facility that, uh, he can use those knowledges to transfer to this particular.
And that would, what you're requesting, Mr. Mills, would be called schematic design. That would be the first phase of a service and, uh, we would be able to do that. That would give you site plan, floor plan, elevation and cost estimate. And with those, we would, uh, be able to, uh, I think with confidence, say both, here's how each of these buildings are going to work and here's how much it's going to cost.
Yeah. Now, some other issues that are, uh, that have to be considered here is that number one is the environmental impact, which I've instructed the city engineer to begin to say, put together, such as there are two old service stations in the site that may have contaminated, uh, ground and other issues like that. And discussion with Nick Walters, what we're proposing to do here, uh, it did not bother him for this to be piecemeal. When I say piecemeal, uh, he's concerned about his monies in regard to his loan to where you go ahead and you buy the properties, uh, for the police complex. And then say move over and get the properties for the municipal justice. And that, uh, you're dealing with properties that would probably require, uh, some degree work on, on attorney's, uh, uh, ticket in order to say, get all the titles worked out and, and come forth. Uh, very much like what, uh, uh, the Ergon proposal was, is that they've, uh, really worked on that and get that. And this would require that type of stuff as well.
You suggested we get a environmental certificate before we purchase.
Well, I would, uh, you're going to have to.
Yeah.
You got, you got to get all that sort of stuff that, uh, is done. Uh, you may run into a snag. I've been told by the city engineer that there is a drainage, uh, uh, pipe on the north end of where the police department is right there. He feels like that it's perhaps, uh, in the easement of the highway, that, uh, something that we would. He feels like that it's perhaps in the easement of the highway, that something that we would have to deal with from the point where the green area is on the west side of the police station. You could go into a basement there and actually see this big highway drainage system that goes in through there. I don't know how in the world they had a night club down there, but there is potential issues here. And I feel like that what we need tonight is an additional direction from the board of which direction that we need to go.
Well, I was just going to ask a question real quick. The approximately $2 million that the electric department may be able to put into this, is that based upon whatever will be left over after construction of the warehouse and other projects are done, or is that so?
No, I think that's, that's separate. Is that not read right, Ed? And it's possible that there may be some funds left over even after the construction of the warehouse, but I've never seen a building project had any funds ever left over or anything of any significance. But there's a potential of additional funds there. And it's a little late to go after the grants. Correct me if I'm wrong, you know about that sort of stuff. If we're sitting around waiting on grants to drop on the table, we may be waiting till the entire loan deadline is gone, thereby missing the loan potential and other issues like that. I don't know if grants can attach themselves in the building process. I don't really think so, not usually. There are other ways to get monies, perhaps borrowing monies from the regional planning development. You could look at, say, math, the economic development, money of 10% coming in. This is obviously stimulating areas for potential economic development. There are all types of potential things that can be done here. This is probably going to take the at least, what, two, three-year project to get started, finished out.
Yes, it would be a year to do the design and a year to build the building.
Long time.
I want the police department to build the building in a year.
Well, I figured that we could throw them out of here and we could lease a building downtown, so we're putting in. They would probably like that. But if we, the longer we procrastinate on this, we just keep, say, beating the, beating the horse to death or whatever here with this issue, it's something we really need to make a decision on. We have presented the bond issue to vote on it. And we need to determine if we're going to, say, proceed with this and to set up a motion in order to call for an election of the bonding. In the meantime, have some type of presentation way before the election in order to sell the public.
Is it appropriate to have a comment from the audience?
Oh, yeah, we're always welcome to comment.
First of all, I want to commend you on a couple of things. I think this is a great plan, and I think that in lieu of some of the things that have happened, this could turn out to be a good location. And I also want to comment about this building. I do think this building has great potential. But along with what Mr. Mills said, what we don't want to do is continue the way Starkville has in grasping and doing things without the long-range plan in mind. And we're all aware of the plan that I think you, the mayor, so appropriately called the Melby Plan, about taking the lower end of Lafayette Street and actually building us a new City Hall in the center of it that would give us great gathering spaces for all sorts of community celebrations. We don't want to, we need our, we need these facilities quicker than we need that. But this location is never going to be the location for appropriate City Hall for Starkville. This, it is difficult to get to this area. And no matter if we turn it, twist it, no matter what we do to it, this is never going to be a, something that the average citizen that comes to Starkville drives by and says, that's City Hall in Starkville, that looks great. It's just not appropriately located. And it seems like that plan that the students helped us develop, while it had a lot of features to it, the one thing that just jumped out at you was the, was that down-the-hill concept of building a two- or three- or four-story building down there to take care of City Hall and the electric department and police or whatever. It just seems like we need to put a little more planning in with this to see where would City Hall be, because we need a City Hall, and this is just not it. Now...
Well, that becomes a matter of opinion as well, though.
Well, you're right. And that's what I guess we're doing here, is giving opinions. But it looks like we need a little bit more of a comprehensive plan before we take a major piece of the pie and say, this is it. We're going to go do, we're going to go take care of A, and we'll worry about B down the road, when A and B could be perhaps a little more appropriate.
I don't feel like anybody at the table here would argue with you. It's just that it gets to be a dollar and cents issue, and you can plan and plan and plan. And then to say, to kill that street and build down at the end of it would probably double the cost of what we're talking about here. And at the present time, we're a million, what, million and a half short of even doing what we're proposing here. And that we don't have many options to even come up with that. And so to do what the Melby Plan encouraged was to, say, kill Lafayette Street and build something across there would probably cost the neighborhood $15, $16 million. And it's just not there. Yes.
I guess that's possible. Are you saying you've gone to the, you've gone to the same length of preparing this proposal as there, or are you just grafting in thin air and pulling down that?
No, I'm grafting anything in thin air. I've never done that.
It's not, it's like a very little bit more property than we originally looked at. Anyway, I'm just saying, as a, as a citizen, and I do think that people of Starkville do want improved city facilities of all types. And I do think properly presented, the people of Starkville are willing to pay for those facilities. And I think of the details that Mr. Shaffer has stated will come down the road and all those things. I just, I know what we've all talked about and some of the things that are circulated, and it looks like that this would preclude anything else happening down there. And I may, perhaps I'm not correct.
Ed, I think the thing that's most fun about architecture is to know how many good solutions there are at every problem and different good solutions. Now, there are an infinite number of bad solutions. But within that, we so often see one solution that looks good and assume that that's the only solution. If you look at this perspective, the one with the colonnade on it that's, that's at one side of the block, if you just flip that exact design over to the other side, then in fact you have an incredibly wonderful space. And there are two ways to terminate an axis with an object or with a space. And certainly when we see the Pope come out into that incredible space, it's powerful. And so, you know, the possibility to solve an urban design problem in many different ways exists. So I don't see where this would preclude that. And, and I feel like we're making a wonderful space now. What type of wonderful space? That it could just be a wonderful hack space. It's twice as good if we do paint it on the other side. So I don't think we've painted ourselves into any corners here and eliminated any options. But it may be a different option. And the notion that you flip that over and make a space that you leave Lafayette Street open the days when it needs to be open and close it down for public activities and gatherings is, again, not an either-or situation, but a both-and. It's both used by the public and is used for special occasions.
And the other thing that you're not looking at, that it became apparent by, say, blocking off Lafayette Street, look at the size of the streets compared to the size of Main Street. They're little streets. And if you start blocking off part of the grid there, you've created a traffic problem on Jefferson Street and the surrounding area there.
Right.
You just blocked all that off, and that with this type of thing that's going to be there, it's going to be increased traffic, tremendous increased traffic on just Lafayette Street, which you're going to need to carry to a major intersection of that.
And I understand that. And I think Gary has actually hit on it, and perhaps it should have been as a part B to the original proposal. I think Gary has actually answered the question best of all. Of course, naturally, if you build this at all, even with Lafayette open, my personal preference is that Jefferson would be brought up to a major street standard by just simply approaching a little bit on the property we would be using. You know, you wouldn't leave Jefferson like it is. Sure, it would be upstaged and perhaps even wider if it needs to be or whatever. Seems like it's wider on one side than the other, but I can't, I'm not sure about that. But I think Gary has had on the answer is that perhaps that without taking the street up, we could indeed look to the future in a comprehensive plan that I mentioned, that there might could be the City Hall concept look upside. And it would be in a prominent area near one of our main entrances to town and on one of our main streets that we could have further control. So I think that's an acceptable...
Well, the only other thing that you get involved with is you begin to say, take all this property for municipal purposes, and that pretty soon you don't have any properties left getting taxes on.
Well, that's true in a way, Mayor, but I think if you looked at those properties, they're not contributing heavily, and probably after their approval, this might be one of the areas where you take public money and you actually wind up producing more tax money by the property around it.
Well, that's what our intentions are with this particular location.
I did, but I did want to point that out. I just think we need to maybe make it part of the overall plan, because I think that's what the people want to see.
Ted, if you've got any options to this, if you've prepared anything other than this, have you got any other alternatives or options of being lifted?
No, although working with the mayor, this is probably our third or fourth sort of conceptual organization, so, and I think, and working with the department heads, I think we had a consensus that each group felt like this was solving their individual problems. And then I think the mayor, looking at it from a big picture point, seemed to feel like it was working in the context of the city.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Shaffer. This brings us down to executive session with the...
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you have the item that was pulled from the...
Oh, yeah, that's right, telephones. Excuse me, I wrote that in. Who's prepared to talk about the telephones?
Al is here.
Yeah.
Or Peter's here, or I'm here.
Could you tell us a little more about this request? As I mentioned before, that it was pretty exciting. I'm still excited after whatever time it is now. And I just think it'd be a good thing to share with everyone here what we're trying to accomplish with what you're proposing.
What we have to propose is the replacing the current phone systems. It's also having a lot of problems with it. It's outdated. We're not going to be able to get maintenance on it anymore. We need to replace it. One thing that it allows us to do is we do replace it, we can get a, like a city hotline, have a one-number point of contact for all citizens to call and to direct them to whatever department they need to go to. It'll also allow us to expand in the future as, you know, need be, just completely upgrade or software upgrade and hardware upgrade.
And if I understood correctly, the current phone system, we're not able to service any longer?
No, the NEC is not maintained in part fully.
And for anyone else, this is a budgeted item that currently we have funded, $2,000 or so.
Allows us to have voicemail, which means around 100%.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the telephone system upgrade for the City Hall administrative offices as listed in our documents.
We have a second?
Second.
A motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Keep your weight. We've got 100%. Thank very much. Do I have a motion that we move into executive session?
I think that we move into closed session to determine the need for executive session,